The hour is 9:00 AM and I call this meeting to order. Casey Griffin, our honor staff will call the roll to establish a quorum.
Mr. Cobbins. Mr. Darnell.
Here.
Mr. Eby.
Here.
Mr. Edwards.
Here.
Mr. Ferguson.
Here.
Mr. Hamby.
Here.
Mr. Jensen. Ms. Kim. Mr. Kraus. Mr. Morrow. Chairman Hartgrove.
Here.
Madam Chairman, you have six members present.
I wasn't sure if I could be heard. Could you give me?
No, I couldn't. I couldn't, Daryl.
I'm here.
Seven members present.
And I did see Nate was on a moment ago. I don't know if we've lost him or not. Just trying to check. I do see him on the screen. Let's proceed. I do declare that we are, we have a quorum and we are duly convened. I am going to read.
Hello?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Hey, this is Nate. Yeah, sorry, I couldn't get the sound to work on my computer, so I'm here too.
Okay, great. Very good. Thank you.
Come in.
Very good. And you will not see Sarah visually, but she is on through audio. Pursuant to Section 8 of Policy 1.400, "The Board Meetings Policy." Workshops are meetings of the State Board, sitting as a committee of the whole. A meeting of the State Board, sitting as a committee of the whole. Section 1, subsection E of the same policy, in accordance with TCA 8-44-108, requires all votes taken during electronic meetings of the Board to be taken by call or the roll. In accordance with this policy and law, I move that the State Board dissolve itself into a committee of the whole for the purposes of conducting our workshop. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Larry Jensen.
Larry Jensen provides the second. Mr. Griffin will call the roll. Okay, this is for approval.
Mr. Collins.
Aye.
Mr. Darnell.
Aye.
Mr. Eby.
Aye.
Mr. Edwards.
Aye.
Mr. Ferguson.
Aye.
Mr. Hamby.
Aye.
Mr. Jensen.
Aye.
Ms. Kim.
Aye.
Mr. Morrow.
Aye.
Madam Chairman.
Aye. Based on that vote, I declare that we are in the committee of the whole for the purposes of conducting our workshops. Before we move into the agenda, I do want to officially welcome our newest member to the State Board of Education, which is Mr. Garan Hamby. We did acknowledge him in a special call meeting with the State Board, but I do want to officially welcome him to the Board. He is our student representative. He is an honor student and a senior at Eagleville High School in Rutherford County. He has certainly had a distinguished, I want to say, career, but accomplishments and achievements during his high school term. And we would ordinarily do an official ceremony if we were able to meet in person, but because of the circumstances of having to meet virtually, we're not able to do that. However, I am pleased that we were able to have his official penning ceremony during the Rutherford County School Board meeting, in which our Board member, Mr. Gordon Ferguson, was there to officially pin him and welcome him to the Board. But today, we are officially welcoming him to his first quarterly Board meeting of the State Board of Education. Welcome, Mr. Garan Hamby. We're delighted to have you with us. A few reminders for presenters. Please state your name and your title for the record. And Board members, as always, when you ask your question or make comments, please state your name for the record as well. So let's begin the presentations. And the first item on the agenda is member discussion of licensure actions. Ms. Brittany Kendrick and Mr. Todd Madison. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning and good morning to the members. I am Brittany Kendrick, the Assistant General Counsel for the Board, along with my colleague Todd Madison, Staff Attorney for the Board. Before you are the staff recommendations for educator license discipline at tomorrow's meeting. First, I wanted to make a note that we will need to pool and discuss Item E, Joseph Francis separately from the other items. As Mr. Francis made a request to, a proper request to speak on his behalf at the meeting tomorrow, and that request was granted, so he will be given some time to speak and then you all can discuss and deliberate and vote. And additionally, this time is to answer any clarifying questions you all may have about the recommendations for tomorrow or alert myself and Mr. Madison of any other items besides Item E that you would like to pool to discuss separately from tomorrow, in tomorrow's vote.
So hearing, it sounds like we're not talking about these items. However, I want to ask a clarifying question mainly for the record and to make sure everybody's on the same page with this. We have two individuals, and I believe they're identically situated, and that's Item J and K, who were issued suspensions for one year in Florida. And those suspensions began in October of 2019 and end in October of 2020. And with that being said, it's my understanding that their suspension will remain in effect until we receive notification officially that they have completed their alcohol treatment program. And the clarification question I want to ask is, in this particular case, it's my understanding that the completion of that program has to be submitted to Florida. And then, if that is the case, and I believe it's true, then whose responsibility is it to send that information to Tennessee to remove the suspension from this educator's license?
Ty, do you want to take that one? Both, since those are cases?
Sure. We would receive notification from Florida that they had completed everything required and that they were in active standing in Florida.
So, Todd, just to be sure. The requirement to prove that that treatment program was completed has to go to the state of Florida, correct?
Correct.
And then is it Florida who notifies us or the educator who notifies us as well that that program has been completed? Is that clear?
I think we get, go ahead, Brittany.
It can be either or, Lillian. So typically, if the educator notifies us that they have completed their treatment and did everything they were supposed to do in Florida, we then follow up with Florida to confirm that information. So it's kind of a dual. It's dual. But Florida, once they enact, once they reinstate those educators, they're supposed to notify the National Clearinghouse and we'll get a notification that way too. But, so it just depends, but it's either way. But we always confirm. We don't, we never take the word of the educator solely. We always follow up with Florida or the state that we're getting this information from to confirm that they're good to go in that respect.
That's helpful. The official notification. Thank you. I do not have any more questions or comments. Does anyone else?
I have a question, generally speaking, on the two items that had the special education situation where the teachers were sort of manhandling those students. I know in one case, there was a sort of legal action taken, but I'd like to know, in what instances are we empowered to refer these items to law enforcement? And also, are we able to, in addition to our action, mandate that these individuals acquire some knowledge of working with special needs students? You know, I know the action represents the punitive outcome for them, but if they ever come back into a classroom, I think they need to have some, or even seek to come back into a classroom, they need to have some knowledge and ability to understand special needs students and how to work with them.
As far as law enforcement, typically speaking, those local school districts make recommendations or make referrals to law enforcement. So whenever there is some kind of involvement of inappropriate physical contact or communication or any kind of harm to the student, the local school district notifies DCS typically and law enforcement, and they conduct their investigation separately. And when we get the report about the information from the school district, we follow up with DCS and law enforcement regarding their investigation to inform our and your decision about what license action, if any, should be taken. As far as making any kind of requirements around additional education, et cetera, regarding special education or any issue, that's usually when we make recommendations, including up the suspension, but also getting some kind of professional development or some story and target specific courses, like we can say with respect to special education or boundary issues, or even something like proof of re-treatment for alcohol. And they will stay suspended or revoked or what have you until they have provided that proof of professional development completion to our offices before they can be reinstated. I'm not sure. I hope that answers the question, Daryl.
Yeah, that's helpful.
The other thing, too, I'm not going back from some system. I believe it's Item F, where the educator was issued a formal reprimand. I believe this was a general education teacher who had a student who is special needs, who was obviously put into that classroom for the appropriate reasons, I'm sure. But the teacher indicated he did not know that the student was special needs, regardless of the child, student being a special needs. I think the action still stands based on the behavior. But in this case, it was not in a traditional special education class, and it may have been more challenging for any educator to realize that. But it doesn't negate still the behavior of grabbing twice in the same day, I believe, the student by the arm and being aggressive. So I think there's a little bit of a distinction, but, you know, when you look at the traditional special education teacher who's gone through all the training and better understands those kinds of situations, a general educator may not have that same level of training to give them all of the supports that they need to understand. Each student is certainly precious and needs to be treated appropriately. But I think it could be that in those cases, other general education teachers need that training as much as anyone who's working all day long with special education students. So I just say that to say, I think it could be a bit more challenging on the general education side of the House. And unless you say something different to that, Brittany or Todd, I think we need to keep that in mind as we look at these cases going forward.
Yeah, you're right, Lillian. We try to consider all of the circumstances, like you stated, when we're making recommendations to you all.
I know you do. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Brittany, and thank you, Todd. Let's move on into Item 2, Mass Standards Review Process and Proposed Revisions. Dr. Stephanie, and I'm probably going to mispronounce her name, Colich, College? I apologize. Please proceed. Tell me the correct pronunciation. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Stephanie Colich. You got it right. I am at the University of Tennessee at Martin, and I am the Director of Accreditation for Martin, and I'm also a professor of mathematics. And Catherine Johnson is going to be co-proceeding with me. Catherine?
Yes, I am Catherine Johnson, and I am the Policy Coordinator with the State Board of Education. So we are just here to outline the Mass Standards Review process that has been taking place over the last year. So the Tennessee Standards Review process is laid out in TCA 49-1-310, 311, and 312. The State Board is required to review academic standards at a minimum of every six years. The mass standards were last reviewed in 2014/2015. So this process, while internally started last summer, summer 2019, it kicked off publicly in November of 2019 with the first public review of the standards. This survey website was created by the Southern Regional Education Board, otherwise known as SREB. We received over 30,000 responses in that survey from Tennesseans across the state, representing a wide variety of interests, such as parents, educators, and professionals in other industries. Then, using that information provided by the public survey, in January and February of 2020, educator advisory teams met and worked reviewing those standards along with the public feedback. These teams were made up of educators both K-12 and higher ed in kindergarten through fifth grade, sixth through eighth grade, and then ninth through 12th grade. They went through all the standards with a fine tooth comb to ensure that all standards within those grade bands were appropriate, effective, and had a correct progression throughout. Then, in March 2020, a subset of those educator advisory team members met and looked at the standards from a more holistic view to ensure that all of the materials flowed from kindergarten all the way through our high school courses. Now with those newly revised standard recommendations, they went back out to the public for a second review. In the second review, we actually received over 45,000 responses, once again representing a cross-section of Tennesseans. Once again, SREB did that survey website for us and collected all of that information and aggregated it for us. That then went to the Standards Recommendation Committee. The Standards Recommendation Committee is a group of Tennesseans that are selected by the Governor, the Lieutenant Governor, and the Speaker of the House. These people took the educators' standard revisions, as well as the second round of public feedback, and went through the standards again to ensure that everything aligned correctly and no more changes were needed. While it is the prerogative of the Standards Recommendation Committee to make further changes, they found that the work of the educators was very strong and made minor changes in the September meetings. We are now, to you guys, they are going to be before the State Board for first reading tomorrow. And then looking ahead, assuming everything, the standards pass on first reading tomorrow, they will be on final reading in February of 2021. Then the textbook adoption cycle start, both at the state level and then local textbook adoption in 2021 to early 2023. And then the standards will be officially implemented in schools in the 2023-24 school year. Are there any questions on the review cycle that took place over this past year?
Madam Chair, this is Bob Eby.
Yes, Bob, please proceed.
Catherine, I think you know that Amy and I sat on the TMAG, Tennessee Math Alignment Group, representing the Board on that committee where we're looking at K through 12 and how it integrates into the high school and looking at math requirements. How does that group, or how has the things that we're doing there informed the committees here and impacted any decisions at this point in time?
Yes. So on those educator advisory teams, we actually had a couple educators that also sat on the TMAG group. So they were definitely able to bring the thoughts and ideas from TMAG into those educator advisory teams. As well as at the State Board staff level, we have been consistently ensuring that we have stayed up to date through Amy and you on the TMAG recommendations and seeing how they might potentially influence the Mass Standards Review process.
And Catherine is exactly right. I would also add, the standards that you'll see on this cycle for high school include the three required courses of Algebra I, Algebra II, and Geometry, or the parallel sequence of Integrated Math. We actually held off on reviewing the fourth-year math courses, like Precal, Statistics, Calculus, Applied Math, because we knew that higher ed and the TMAG group were looking at those standards really closely this year and making their own revisions. So next year, in 2021, we'll actually run a process of reviewing just those fourth-years math standards so that we can take the work that higher ed did, look at it through our K-12 lens, and then make any revisions necessary. Given that these standards won't be implemented in schools for several more years, that would still leave enough time for preparation.
Great. That's very helpful. Thanks.
If I have one interjection with regard to the textbook adoption cycle. It's not with regard to the cycle itself, but it is with regard to the textbooks that will go before the Textbook Commission for Review, textbook and instructional materials. Will TMAG or anyone have an opportunity to highly encourage that commission to look at those books, and I'm sure they will, but I just wanted to say this. Having had a conversation recently with an administrator in Manchester City Schools regarding numeracy. And of course, we know there's a lot of attention to literacy. And this assistant principal indicated to me that he believes in literacy and it's highly important to math in every subject, but that numeracy often gets left behind and that we don't always feel like we have rich, strong instructional materials to support us in teaching literacy, numeracy, I'm sorry, numeracy and math. So with that being said, who may be able to ensure that that takes place? Because we obviously will not be reviewing those books themselves. No concerns.
That's a great question. The Textbook Commission is an independent commission with its own rules and bylaws, as I know you know. They do also have public comment periods, similar to the state Texas, the state Standards Review Process, rather. So public feedback can occur on the front end there. I know they also contract with educators across the state to do an initial review of materials for standards alignment. So folks could certainly apply to be part of those committees as well and give their input.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Okay, to go ahead and pass it off to Dr. Colich. And she is going to go a little bit more in-depth into what the standards look like with the revision recommendations and a little bit more detail in how the revision process worked.
Thank you, Catherine. So I wanted to give you an idea of where we are right now. So the current math standards, as you know, a standard is a statement of what a student should know, understand, and be able to do. And we've got these standards grouped in a couple of different ways. We have them grouped by grade level. So we have a K-5 group of standards, a 6A group of standards, and a high school group of standards that include the traditional sequence of Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II, the integrated sequence of the Integrated Math I, II, and III courses, and then the fourth-year courses, which Ms. Owen just mentioned to you that we're going to review a little bit later. And graphically, this kind of tells you how our standards are laid out. So these are called learning progressions. And you can see that we have a learning progression that leads to number and quantity. We have a learning progression that leads to algebra and functions. Geometry is prevalent throughout the grade levels. And we have a learning progression that leads to statistics and probability in high school. Now, within the standards, we have groupings that are called domains. In high school, we have an additional grouping called a conceptual category. Within the domain and conceptual categories, we have clusters, and then we get into the meat of the standards themselves. Now, a domain is considered a large category or grouping of related math standards. So that graphic that we saw a while ago of the learning progressions, next slide, Catherine, these are really the domains that you'll see within the standards. Then we get into the clusters. And the clusters are smaller groupings of the closely related standards within those domains. And there's a notion in mathematics of kind of the big ideas in mathematics. So these are, you know, I view these as the elevator speeches for the standards. So these are the big things that our students are learning. And then, if you look at the way the standards are structured within the documents, you can see that the domain, in this example from third grade, the domain is measurement and data. We have a cluster that are talking, that's talking about measurement and estimation of intervals of time, liquid volumes, and masses of objects. And then we have the standards themselves. And if you look at that bottom standard, you'll see that sometimes we include examples in some of these standards to give a flavor of what that standard is trying to get at. And the, within, from kindergarten through eighth grade, those examples are embedded within the standards themselves. Once you get to high school, things get a little more complicated. So we have conceptual categories. These are subdomains, and these nest within, between the domain and the clusters. So these are sets of related clusters. And so here's an example from Algebra, from Integrated Math I. You have the domain of algebra. The conceptual category is called Seeing Structure and Expression. So this is a group of clusters that are looking at structure within different types of algebraic expressions. We've also added a column titled Scope and Clarification for these courses. What happens is, the traditional sequence and the integrated sequence each have the same set of standards. But the set of standards is shuffled a little bit. So you'll have different standards occurring in different courses. We also have scopes associated with those different sets of classes. So in Algebra I, we do a lot of, for example, linear and quadratic functions. In Integrated Math I, we look at linear and exponential functions. So we have some scope there to give guidance to the teachers about what specific types of functions we're looking at within each course. And so we've pulled the examples out of the standards and added those to the scope and classification so that it's a little more obvious to teachers what they're covering and what they're not covering within each standard.
Dr. Colich, may I make a really quick interruption?
Yes.
Just a reminder for Board members that districts can choose whether to use the traditional or integrated pathway of mathematics. It's completely up to district choice, what they feel will best serve their students. And as Stephanie said, they cover the same sets of standards. So after the three years of the three required math courses, students are getting to the same place. It's just about what's taught in each year.
Okay, so now we're going to talk a little bit more in-depth about what each of the review teams did. And so let me remind you of the levels of review. We had the first round of public review and feedback. Then we had two sets of review teams that met, and I served on both of those sets. The educator advisory team and the Standards Development Committee. After the Standards Development Committee met, we had another round of review, then the Standards Recommendations Committee, and that's what's coming to you. So let me begin with the educator advisory teams. We met in January through March of this year. We had three teams of educators that looked at these standards. One team looked at the K-5 standards, one team looked at the 6A standards, and one team looked at the 912 standards. the nine-twelve standards. And we were provided by the State Board of Education, uh, the results of that first round of public feedback, and we got big notebooks full of comments and reviews. And we also had a report on six-twelve alignment. There had been some issues with some overlaps of standards and some gaps in standards, and we wanted to make sure that, that we addressed all of those issues as well. And we, as we looked at these, uh, different sets of standards, we wanted to look for the clarity of wording, we wanted to identify any gaps that could, that, uh, required a big jump in, in cognitive ability and cognitive levels for students, to see if we needed to scaffold from once, one year to the next. And I mentioned the vertical alignment, we wanted to make sure that the, the standards moved smoothly from one grade level to the next. We looked at existing examples, uh, we provided a lot of, of additional examples to, to provide more clarification for teachers. There had been some concern about the number of standards, the, the amount of work involved in some of those standards, and so we wanted to kind of balance the load by clarifying, removing extraneous standards, packing in some standards that, that were really necessary to help develop, uh, student understanding. And with the high school team, we also looked at college and career alignment. For kindergarten through grade eight, there weren't a lot of major revisions. Uh, we primarily worked on filling the gaps, clarifying the wording, providing additional examples. There were a few standards that were moved around to, to provide a better fit for the information, but there was, there's, there's nothing really major or controversial in those grade levels. In high school, we focused primarily on those first three years, uh, the traditional sequence and the integrated sequence. And we started every conversation with, is this standard really something that every student that graduates from high school needs to know about? So this is where we, we started considering the, those, uh, career trajectories, uh, the pathways that students were, were going to take. We looked at a lot of, um, alignment with college-level work and the types of careers that students were going into, and asking the question, does this standard really help those students who are moving into these career paths? We also wanted to increase the amount of work students do with statistics, because we, we are living in a statistical society. And we, we felt based on, on several reports and information that we had been able to gather about college and career trajectories, students were not getting the foundation and statistics that they needed to have. And so if you'll go to the next slide, this answers, uh, Mr. Abbey's question, uh, from a while ago. There were several of us, especially on the high school team, that are a part of the, the T-bag group, and we had been reading these reports from the Mathematical Association of America, the American Statistical Society, the Data Center at the University of Texas, uh, of Texas at Austin, uh, the National Council of Teachers for Mathematics, uh, career reports. We were familiar with all of this information. And all of the reports in one form or another advocate, uh, including more statistics modeling, building better connections, and building greater understanding in those first three years of high school. And so that really informed a lot of the decisions that we made. And we, we'll get into, to the, the major revisions a little more deeply in, in a few minutes, um, but essentially, we increased a lot of the coursework in basic statistics, especially around understanding, using, and interpreting data. We decreased the amount of coursework that prepared students for limited career choices, and so these were primarily in, uh, preparation for STEM fields. Most of the students who are going to be moving into STEM fields will go through the pre-calculus calculus route, and a lot of the, the, the standards that we removed were already in the pre-calculus course, in the fourth, fourth year course. And so we removed those from the, uh, the high, the first three years of high school in order to make room for the statistics, uh, standards and modeling standards that we wanted to add. We also wanted to increase the understanding of the relationship between geometry and algebra. Uh, those have traditionally been taught in, in some, something of a silo, so there's not a lot of movement, you either do it geometrically or you do it algebraically, and so we wanted students to be able to use both tools, or both sets of tools easily and flexibly and be able to move from one to the other. And we also wanted to allow students more opportunities to explain and justify mathematical thinking beyond the idea of a formal proof, and we'll get into that a little bit more in a few minutes. Once that group was done, we moved to the standards development committee. Um, this committee included members from all three educator advisory teams. We did most of that work in March, and we looked at the standards by domain from kindergarten all the way through high school, rather than looking at individual grade levels, so we were primarily focused on the flow from one year to the next. We wanted to make sure that those standards were clear, that the wording was consistent, we wanted to see if there were any remaining gaps as, as we looked at this domain from beginning to end. Uh, we were especially interested in vertical alignment as well. Most of the changes we were ma, we made were in wording, notation, or examples, we, we, uh, added a few examples, we, we changed wording primarily to make it a little more consistent across grade levels. We rewrote the introductions for each course, and probably the biggest thing that came out of, of this group was looking at the major work of the grades. Uh, so the current standards have highlighted in green particular standards that are considered the major work of the grade, and those are what teachers are supposed to spend, spend the bulk of their time on. Then we have sets of standards that are called supporting work of the grade. And what teachers were finding in practice was that when you hit a certain grade level, something, a, a certain topic would suddenly become a part of the major work of the grade, but it wouldn't necessarily have appropriate supporting scaffolding work done, because that was, that was, in some sense, considered optional. It, 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 it wasn't really covered to the depth that it needed to be in order for this to eventually become major work of the grade. So our recommendation is to remove that designation, so that teachers are, are giving, giving all the standards equal time.
Um, so then we're going to move on to the standards recommendation committee. As I mentioned before, it was made up of nine individuals selected by the governor, Lieutenant Governor, and the Speaker of the House. They met on three consecutive Fridays in September via WebEx, and considered the public feedback from the second survey, and made additional revisions to the standards. While it is under the purview of the standards recommendation committee to make as many changes as they want, as they were going through the work done by the previous educator groups, they felt that the work that had been done was strong and did not make any major changes. Uh, once again, they just made a couple wording, um, modifications for clarity, um, and made a couple adjustments to some of the examples, but overall, they made very few revisions to the proposed standards. On September twenty-fifth, they did vote to approve the recommendations to go before the state board. Before we get into the, um, changes to the high school standards, are there any questions on what we have covered so far?
Madam Chair, this is Mr. Edwards.
Yes, Mr. Edwards.
How do the assessments follow these changes in alignment?
That's a great question. I can jump in if you like.
Yes, I was just about to say, if you'd like to do that.
That's a great question. Like, that's one reason why there is that several-year delay between when the state board adopts standards on final reading and when they're implemented in schools. We specifically mentioned the textbook and instructional materials adoption process as taking place over the next two years. In addition, the State Department will be updating the math standards, or the math assessment rather, to align with these standards. Standards are the core, and they drive instruction, and they also drive an aligned assessment. So that's why we have a couple-year gap to make sure all of those things are in place before these go into classrooms.
Madam Chair, Bob Eby.
Yes, Mr. Eby.
I want to follow on a little bit to Mike's question. Uh, Stephanie, you mentioned that things that were in the earlier grades, particularly in the STEM area, uh, is now basically in the fourth year, uh, class, and therefore, I understand, removing them so you can make room, and glad to see the emphasis on statistics. With those early grades, I, I know complex numbers is coming up here in a second, I, I saw that earlier, and as an engineer, I recognize the importance of understanding complex numbers. If we wait, though, until their fourth year before we introduce those concepts, are we impacting the students down the road, uh, in not providing them that opportunity of some of these key concepts? And how will we know whether we've made that impact, negative impact, say, three or four years from then, when they go into college? I know one thing that, on the T-MAG, we talked about the importance of math throughout high school to succeed in college, and so by pulling standards out, are we watering down that technical path?
No, sir, I, I don't believe that we are. Um, so, so I'm going to pull on my experiences as a, um, an educator on the college level, and I can tell you that, that students come into college, even though they've had things like complex numbers and formal proofs and, and the, the types of things that we've talked about removing, um, when they get to college, we have to go over that information again. And very few actually come in, at least into my institution, now, UT Knoxville, they have higher, uh, entrance requirements than we do, and, and so, so their, their average ACT is a little higher than, than ours is. But when you're talking about the typical student, um, when they come into our classrooms, they normally do not understand complex numbers, because they have not had a reason to learn them. They're, they're kind of, of, of taught in the sense of, of, um, we need complex numbers in order to solve quadratic equations, and to find all the solutions of quadratic equations, but they don't, they don't understand why that's important at that level. And when, when they get into our classes where they really need those types of things, and we teach them again, and show, they show, they're, they're able to see the context, that really helps them a lot. And so I, I think the bottom line is, we're, we're already reteaching a lot of this stuff for the people who are going into the STEM fields. Uh, the vast majority of our students, though, are not going into the STEM fields, and we just, we just think that, that their time would be better spent being prepped for something that will make them a mathematically literate citizen, and we can, we can fix the STEM fields later.
I understand, so, well, that's my question, so we can fix it later. Fundamentally then, will there be some kind of assessment done three years, four years from now, on what the impact has been on students as a regard, with respect to these changes in the math standards, how they have progressed through college and, and, and beyond? I mean, is that part of this overall process, or do we just assume that what we're doing is the right thing for the students, and then when they get through college and, and beyond, you never ever go back and look and see if it was?
Um, it is not part of the formal process laid out, um, and as we said, these standards won't, um, be implemented in schools until the 2023 school year. Um, so at that point, we do have quite a, it's going to be quite a ways into the future when we would see any changes, but, um, a lot of people like, uh, Dr. Colich, who work in higher ed and also partner with us on K-12 materials, they, I believe, will be able to give us, um, insight and input into what they're seeing in their institutions. And Amy, if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, um, and forgive me if my volume's too low, I've gotten a couple heads up about that. Um, we're also happy to find ways to work with the Board of Regents and the Higher Ed Commission to think about longer-term reviews of changes to math standards. Bob, that might be an interesting thing to bring up with the math alignment group, uh, whether they could almost look sort of a natural study of when these standards get implemented, do they see changes in higher ed down the road?
Yeah, I mean, I think, because basically what we're doing is we're changing standards based on what we think this group thinks, and, and hopefully by having enough people in here, we've got a good broad view. But, but the bottom line is, is what's the impact down the road? And so, uh, I'll bring that up to the math alignment group. I think we need to understand, when we make these changes, have we made them for the better, or have we made them for the worse? If we've made them for the worse, we need to change them later for something.
I think that's a great idea. Um, I will just remind folks, by law, we are required to have representatives from Tennessee higher ed institutions on the educator advisory team. So we had Dr. Colich, and we had other folks as well for giving that higher ed perspective as the standards were being developed. So I, I like the idea of having them on the front end, and then some kind of follow-up study on the back end.
And I will also note, we also had higher ed representation on the standards recommendation committee as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I, I'll, I'll add to that a little bit. I think we will have some, some preliminary data show up on ACT scores and MATE scores and, and the information we get back from those exams. Um, in the long run, I think there would, I would expect there to be a shift in that, those first-year courses that students take when, when they first, uh, go into college. Um, I'm hoping that the shift will show that they will need less remediation and will be able to go directly into first-year courses that are more appropriate for their career paths.
Good, if we have an assessment, a way to do that, assess that, I think that would be helpful, thanks.
I think also we will see some preliminary data in end-of-course exams. Part of the discussion among the educator advisory teams and the standards recommendation committee is that we don't want these first three courses to, one, be a stumbling block to graduation, um, and then, two, a stumbling block when entering higher ed, um, courses. And so I think that, um, we can also see, we'll see some preliminary data coming out of those end-of-course exams as to whether the content that's in them, are students, um, digesting it more fully, um, versus where we are at right now.
So I want to talk in and just say, Bob, thank you so much for making those points and those comments, I think critically important to this entire process, because if the changes do not net out the end result that we're desiring to have come from this, then we would have made, uh, an error in making those changes. That's just a general comment. I had intended to say, and I will say it now, I think it's a, a huge compliment to all the working groups and, um, T-MAG, as well as the advisory group team, that you got to this point where this work has been so well-developed and so well-thought-out that the standards review committee had very few changes. So I did want to go on record to say that, because that in and of itself is a huge accomplishment. And then I wanted to clarify, standards review committee, Catherine, did you say that members of that review committee are in fact with higher ed? So I know they were appointed.
They were not all higher ed, but there was higher ed. Um, across that committee, we saw representation from K-12, um, public schools, higher ed, as well as, um, related industry.
Very good, that's what I thought you had said. And so that even further, uh, thinks why I said what I said, that, uh, I think having their approval with very few changes is incredibly impactful, so great work there. And I think that follow-up piece with higher ed is critically important to Bob's point. Are there any other comments or questions from members before we proceed with the next part of this presentation?
This is Larry Jensen.
Yes, Larry. Yes, Larry.
I am curious with the amount of public comment, the rather high-profile nature of this process, if there is a communication plan to let the public know the outcome, or the message, or whatever that might be. In some way, I recognize that it's out of ways. However, given sort of the, I don't know if controversy is the right word, but what generated this, if we do have a plan to make sure it's communicated to the state legislature, to those who have been following this, it's amazing to me that you have, you know, 75,000 comments, I mean, in total. And I think that's worthy of reporting, and would like to know, and don't need an answer today, but would like to know if there is a plan. And then, secondly, it seems to me that after listening to this, that I probably need some remedial work in math myself.
Yes, we actually have that included in our PowerPoint at the end. So if it is okay with you, Mr. Jensen, I can go more into detail as we near the end of our presentation.
Thank you. That'll be just fine.
Great.
Do you have any comment on remedial work for board members on math?
Maybe take it up with Bob Eby, because he is one of our resident math experts.
So he'll be our teacher? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'll take under advisement.
Very good. That's you all.
All right, so let's talk a little bit about specifically what was changed in high school. And so this is a list of the topics that we removed from high school. We wanted to focus our efforts on polynomials of degree three or less in those first three years of school. We want students to become flexible in understanding what a polynomial is and working with the graphs of the polynomials and understanding how to read the graphs. And we can get into the details of what do I do with a polynomial greater than three? Most of the time, if you have a polynomial greater than three, you're going to go straight to technology to solve it anyway. That means you're going to need to understand how to read the graph. We are removing formal proofs, which is a major shift in geometry. We want more flexibility in being able to understand and communicate why things are true and to justify solutions. And the formality associated with proofs just tends to get in the way sometimes. Complex numbers was mentioned. That's one of the things that we have removed. Series, rational functions, unit circle trigonometry and radians, all of those things have been relegated to precalculus. Trigonometric identities occur in precalculus. There were a few other minor topics that were removed. Those tended to be things that there was only one standard in those three years that addressed those topics anyway. And we thought it would be better just to move those to appropriate fourth-year courses and spend more time on these other things.
Did you all have unanimous agreement on the removal of these topics?
Oh, we didn't have unanimous agreement on anything. We've had long, involved discussions. And the deciding factor in every case went back to the question of, is this something that every student needs to know by the time they graduate high school? And we had agreement on, no, this is not something that every student needs to know by the time they graduate high school.
I will also add, all of these major changes that the educator teams recommended were outlined for the Standards Recommendation Committee as well. Stephanie Colic not only did a thorough presentation, but was also on for several chunks of all of their meetings. And so this was, again, discussed at the Standards Recommendation Committee level. And they did have some very thorough conversations about whether these topics should be moved to fourth-year or not. And they did also come to the conclusion that students would be better served having these topics in fourth-year math courses.
So these would be available? This is the minimum standards, they would be available for students who wanted to, or were capable of going there?
Correct. So most of these would have been moved into the precalculus course. And so at the fourth-year math level, students can take precalculus, applied mathematics, which is for people particularly interested in TCATs. We are creating a statistics fourth-year course. So students will be able to choose their fourth-year option based on where they are hoping to go after high school in terms of chosen career. So this content is available to students in a fourth-year math course.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Catherine, if you'll go to the next slide. These are the things that we have added to replace those topics. So we have added a more emphasis on understanding geometric formulas as functions, so that's getting in that algebra geometry tie. We added matrices. We added compositional functions. Both of those are important for students who are interested in business, who are interested in social work, social sciences. We added using geometric constructions to solve problems. So again, we're looking at the tie between algebra and geometry and how one can help the other. We have that greater emphasis on the relationship between algebra and geometry. And if you'll go to the next slide, this is where we actually get into the statistics and probability. We're looking at measures of center to compare data sets. So in the public, when you're looking at summary data for some sort of survey, they will often give you either the mean or the median, whichever one makes them look best. And so it's important for students to understand measures of center. It's important to understand Z-scores, so they'll know when something is significant. We looked at, we're adding potential sources of bias in statistical studies, comparing measures and spread in two data sets. We're looking at counting techniques, so how many different ways can something occur? And again, we're bringing that geometry perspective into the idea of probability and statistics.
So our next step. By law, the proposed revisions will be sent to the education committees of the state legislature at least 60 days before final reading. So that is where it will be passed on to our Senate and House. If the state board approves the standards on final reading, the standards will be the basis of state and local textbook adoption cycles, revisions to the state assessments to ensure alignment with the revised standards, and the provision of educator training and/or resources on the revisions by the Department of Education and/or LEAs. Also, in the past, we have always done a press release after the final reading of revised standards. And that is definitely something we can do again so that Tennessee news sources can share that information out. Once again, these revised standards will be implemented in the 2023-24 school year to allow time for all of those other processes to take place. And then finally, the standards for fourth-year courses such as precalculus, statistics, et cetera, will go through the standards review process over the next year after they have, over this past year, they went through an initial process of alignment with higher education this year. So with that, are there any other questions that Dr. Colic and I can answer?
Catherine, this is Sarah, just to piggyback on Larry's question slash comment. I think it'll be interesting and important to report back to the board members as we move forward, as you said, over a somewhat expensive transition timeframe. The communication plans and response, also, I think the educator training piece is so critical. You know, these are going to be important shifts for our K-12 and our higher ed educators to make in terms of ultimately serving students in the way that these new standards are designed to do. So would just encourage our team to make sure we're making note to report back to the board some of these implementation pieces that have yet to be put into place. But this is exciting, and I just commend you, Stephanie in particular, and Catherine for your support, and all the educators and the public who have participated. As Larry pointed out, this was really a robust feedback process. And so I think that's reflected in the quality of the standards that are coming to the board today. And thank everybody for their involvement.
This is Bobby. I have one more question if I could ask. Last quarter, I think we had an endorsement of six through 10. And what I heard today was focused on K-3, V, six through eight, and nine through 12. And so my question is, does this impact our, I know it doesn't affect the licensure, but I just want to be sure, going back to the training, the teacher training and all, that this gap, six through 10, and this focus is on six through eight and nine through 12, are we going to have any hiccups there, or are we looking at it from that perspective, too?
That was some of the work that the educator advisory teams, the first educator groups, there was a lot of conversations between the six, eighteen, and the nine, twelve team, as well as then when we moved to the Standards Development Committee. They were really focused on the transition, particularly from eighth grade into either Algebra I or Integrated I, to ensure that there are not gaps in learning. And so that was definitely a focus of our educator teams. And the Standards Recommendation Committee chose to look at the standards by domain as well. So they looked at the standards, not by grade level, but by domain to ensure continuation throughout the various grade levels within a topic. Don't know if I answered your question.
No, they did. Thanks.
Great.
Any other questions or comments before we move to the next agenda item? I definitely want to add my thanks to you for your presentations today. You made it certainly very understandable. I previously had commented to Sarah and Amy that I thought the document that you put together was very thorough, easy to read, just an excellent body of work. And I know that it took a great number of people to get you to this point. But I thank you both for your roles and your leadership in this body of work, along with Amy. And Bob Eby, who has served with T-MAG, as well as Amy. So thank you all so much. We'll move on, okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is revised school approval process. Ms. Laquisha Oliver with the State Department of Education.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members. My name is Laquisha Oliver, and I serve as the Department's Director of LEA Approval. State Board staff requested I present highlights of LEA approval, which is one component of the system the department employs to verify local education agency compliance with education laws and State Board of Education rules and regulations. If I may, thank you, Elizabeth. LEA approval supports the department's best-for-all strategic plan embedded evidence of whether students are provided essential services needed for success. LEA compliance with all education laws and State Board of Education rules is a longstanding requirement. Each year, LEAs are required to submit an annual compliance report to the Office of General Counsel. In the report, the Director of Schools and Local Board Chairperson attest compliance with education laws and rules, and, if applicable, submit a corrective action plan addressing any self-reported areas of noncompliance. The department's duty to verify LEA compliance via periodic inspections or monitoring is pursuant to state law and SVE rule, namely those reflected on screen. Again, LEA approval is one component of the department's compliance verification system. And bear with me, I'm experiencing difficulty in advancing slides. Elizabeth, if you could assist in taking me to the next slide, please. Thank you. LEA approval is designed to centralize monitor results across program areas and culminate in the confirmant of LEA approval classifications. Succinctly, the department is required to periodically monitor LEAs for compliance and assign an approval classification accordingly. LEA approval is the vehicle for meeting that charge. While LEA approval yields compliance for both LEAs and the department, the crux of the why of LEA approval is, again, the provision of essential services to students. Finally, LEA approval fosters engagement between LEAs and the department on compliance constraints and available resources. Next slide, please. Elizabeth, if possible, next slide.
I advanced it, but is it not showing up?
All right, it is not. I will carry on. LEA approval is not new. For many years, it was known as school approval and resulted in an annual approval letter. During a hiatus, the department continued monitoring activities but did not confer approval classifications. Control refinements in a subsequent year underscored the need for both process refinement and reinstatement. In terms of the redesign of LEA approval, again, LEA approval was formerly known as school approval. In May, this board approved a revision to the corresponding rule to reflect the rebranding, which stemmed from the department's desire for more precise terminology. An approval classification is assigned at the district level, not school level. Further, the rebranding distinguishes the process from school approval, which entails the department's approval of a new school or grade configuration change within existing schools. The department will monitor districts for LEA approval purposes every three years and centralized monitor results to classify LEAs as approved, conditionally approved, or nonapproved. The addition of conditionally approved was included in the May 2020 rule update. The approved classification denotes the absence of an open corrective action plan stemming from monitoring. Succinctly, the LEA does not have an open corrective action plan. Conditionally approved indicates the department's assignment of a formal corrective action plan to an LEA for one or more areas of noncompliance. The department does not anticipate confirming the nonapproved classification. It is reserved for an LEA that has not completed a corrective action plan by the specified date and is ineligible for an extension. The commissioner has the authority to impose sections on a nonapproved LEA. Finally, the department will report LEA approval classifications to the state board each fall. It appears I've regained control here, and so allow me to catch up in terms of the slides. School year 2021 special provisions. In September, the department solicited input from the Director of Schools on the LEA approval framework. Based on their feedback and the effective date of the LEA approval rule delayed until later this month, the department is deferring the implementation of approval classifications until school year 2021-22. In lieu of an approval classification, the 50 LEAs scheduled for LEA approval monitoring this year will receive a compliance assessment letter in July. will receive a compliance assessment letter in July 2021. The letter will indicate whether monitoring resulted in a corrective action plan for one or more LEA approval metrics and, if applicable, include resources for resolving noncompliance. The deferment does not compromise the department's ability to meet monitor requirements or address related audit findings. It does position the department to afford LEAs grace in this most unusual, complex school year. In selecting LEA approval metrics, the department prioritized the principal services and structures students need to access quality instruction and be equipped for success. For example, are educators properly endorsed? Are class sizes within the slot limit? Are safety measures sound and in alignment with requirements? Additional criteria for metric selection include the existence of formal monitoring activities that result in a corrective action plan if deficiencies arise. As a note, monitoring conducted by federal programs and oversight is quite comprehensive, with areas of focus including students with disabilities, English learners, and educator professional development. Reflected is the 2020-21 LEA approval timeline. The department has disseminated the 2021 LEA approval manual and notified the 50 LEAs randomly selected for school year 2020-21 monitoring. In June, as Director of LEA Approval, I will compile and synthesize monitor results. As conveyed on the earlier slide, in lieu of an approval classification, 2020-21 monitoring will culminate in the department's provision of a compliance assessment letter to the 50 LEAs. Because I got off to somewhat of a rocky start, allow me to recap. The department is reinstating LEA approval formerly known as school approval. Key changes include a rebranding and changing the name to LEA approval and the addition of a third classification, conditionally approved, to account for districts who have an official corrective action plan but are still authorized to operate. This year, in acknowledgement of the novel constraints under which LEAs are operating as a result of a pandemic, we have provisions in place including the delayed or deferred implementation of assigning classifications. In lieu of a classification, in July of 2021, LEAs selected for monitoring this year will receive an assessment compliance letter indicating areas of noncompliance and indicating whether a formal corrective action plan was levied. At this juncture, I am happy to address questions.
Are there any questions, Ms. Oliver?
Madam Chair, Bob Beebe.
Yes, Ms. Reevee.
You said you're reinstating it. Is this something that's been out of the system for a few years or what?
Thank you for your question. In SVE rules, there is the requirement for the department to monitor LEAs periodically and assign a classification. That is a longstanding rule. While the department in recent years continued monitoring activities, we did not assign approval classifications. During that period, we received controller findings pertinent to teacher licensure and in addressing those findings, it underscores the need for us to revise the school approval process now known as LEA approval and reinstate the assignment of classification so that we could be in compliance with the SVE requirement to do so. So differences are not surprise in terms of being in compliance and adhering to education laws and SVE rules. What will be new is the reinstatement of classification. And for the Director of Schools who has been in that role for many years, they're familiar with that process, but it is new to those who are new to that particular role.
Thank you.
Sure.
So Ms. Oliver, I do want to follow and make sure that I understood you. You said, so a school, this process is every three years and the designations are approved or conditionally approved?
Yes, Madam Chair. The third classification, nonapproved, it means one that we don't anticipate assigning.
I understood that. You said that that is reserved for LEAs who have not made changes that they were expected to make. And as a result of not making those changes, they may, the commissioner may issue sanctions on that LEA. Do you have some examples of what those sanctions look like?
Those sanctions could include withholding parts or withholding DEP funds. And it is my understanding that in the past, for areas of noncompliance, there is a precedent in terms of the department levying fines. But it is an option for the commissioner to exercise. It is a last resort because withholding funds, of course, impacts the district or the LEA's ability to provide services, which is what drives the LEA approval process.
Exactly. Now, historically, do you have information that indicates that there have been a number of schools that have not been approved, who had actions that they had to take?
Yes, thank you. I, those actions, those sanctions predate my joining the department, but anecdotally, I have heard internally, and Christie Bowden speaks to this, is necessary, that in some cases, for unresolved areas of noncompliance, the department did exercise the option, the commissioner exercised his or her option to levy a fine.
So do you know, and now that this is under your responsibility, is there anyone within the department or within the core offices that are part of the department that will help these LEAs where there are challenges to do overcoming whatever actions that they're able to resolve?
Absolutely. As I shared earlier, in providing the compliance assessment letter, we will include resources, helpful resources for districts to come into compliance. I, in the monitoring work I currently oversee and in other areas where when noncompliance is detected, we work with districts to help them come into compliance. And example, a recent example concerns the area of employee background shift. In working with a district recently in resolving those compliance, I'm sorry, that area of noncompliance, the LEA shared that it was experiencing constraints in terms of scheduling, in terms of logistics, getting educators to the fingerprinting site and the hours of the fingerprinting site. And so our office, the Office of General Counsel, met with TBI, Superior Investigation, this week to explore options such as a mobile site that would assist districts with a high number of employees that need to be fingerprinted or who need to be fingerprinted. And so what we try to convey, what we hope to convey via the LEA approval process is that compliance is not an opportunity for the department to seek gotcha moments in terms of noncompliance. It's an opportunity for us to engage on what constraints LEAs are facing in terms of not being in compliance so that we can partner, we can collaborate in resolving the issue.
Very good. Thank you so much. Are there any other questions or comments for Ms. Oliver? Thank you so much, Ms. Oliver. I appreciate the work that you are doing and being with us today to present. We are going to take a 10-minute break at this moment. We'll be back at 10:30 sharply to reconvene and take up the next agenda item. Thank you. We're 10 minutes early with our next presentation, but that gives us an opportunity for additional discussion if necessary. So the next item is comments on Educated Diversity Policy Proposal from Dr. George with Tennessee Educators of Color Alliance. Dr. George, it's yours. We have a floor.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to share and present you today. the opportunity to be able to share and present to you today, and I appreciate y'all taking the time and holding space for me to be able to share this presentation. Like I said, my name is Diaries George. I'm the founder, executive director of the Tennessee Educators of Color Alliance, and I want to just preview and provide a little more context as you get ready to transition into a first read of the educated diversity policy that's been set before you tomorrow. So I'll just give you a little context about myself. I came in, I'm not an educator by nature and by trade. I was a career changer. I transitioned into the education space after working in marketing and sales for a handful of years. I worked in higher ed and recruitment and enrollment, and then transitioned into the classroom as a high school teacher within the classroom for five years and had the opportunity to participate in several statewide teacher leadership fellowship and leader roles. And then I transitioned into the role as the director of recruitment at the National Teacher Residency, where I just finished up three years, and more recently, at the top of the year in April, transitioned to lead the Tennessee Educators of Color Alliance full-time as executive director. I started TECA when I was still in the classroom teaching. A lot of this organization and the mission and the vision behind it was birthed out of my own personal experience and the experiences of people that I knew in this space. Our mission, our vision is to connect, develop, and support educators of color with decision-making power in a way that it shapes influences and creates policy. So we need to do that, but in order to do that, we have to amplify the voice and presence in support for educators of color while remaining student-centered and solutions-oriented. So our three areas of focus that we center our work on is mentorship, fellowship, and leadership. A lot of this, again, like I said, was birthed out of my own lived experience as a teacher. I operated for the majority of my tenure in the classroom as the only male teacher of color on staff in the building that I was in for the majority of my time. And similarly, when I had opportunities to lead at the state level through various fellowships and leadership opportunities, that was also the same case to us, where oftentimes either the only person from a underrepresented racial or ethnic background, or one of a small few. And so I've experienced firsthand the value and the power of what a diverse educated workforce can mean to students. They reminded me every day that I was in that building and still do to this day, and this has been my life's work in this profession, and want to kind of share with you and push why this is important and why we have the opportunity here to center Tennessee as a leader in this space. So TECA, what do we do? In more recent times, we had an annual conference that centered teachers from underrepresented backgrounds as leaders. It's open to everyone, but it's an opportunity for people to share in a way where oftentimes they may not be able to. We've done a policy report that centered the voices of teachers of color across the state, so we could really understand their lived experiences and provide recommendations to address their support. We are involved in diversity equity and inclusion consulting. We work right now with universities, networks, charter networks, traditional public schools of how we can better support and create environments that are welcoming and culturally affirming for teachers of color, but then also all teachers in the building, and then also developing leadership opportunities that focus on advocacy and policy for teachers from underrepresented backgrounds and racial, ethnic, diverse backgrounds. And so we're piloting that right now in middle Tennessee and hope to expand it statewide here within the next year. And so why is educated diversity important? You've seen some of this. You'll see this in the pre-read of the policy on the background section, but you've probably heard these things before, but this is important for all students in the state of Tennessee. Exposure to different perspectives, better racial understanding, flexibility in teaching, stereotypes, and implicit bias reduction, the capacity to build cross-cultural relationships, and then more importantly, prepares all students to interact positively within diverse society that they want to transition into upon graduating, and many are also interacting in on a daily basis. And so it also has a deeper meaning in some instances for students of color. They get to see themselves. There's a reflection there. Research has shown us that discipline rates have gone down. There's access to given and talented opportunities, which in some instances leads to more earlier post-secondary opportunities like AP classes, honors classes, dual enrollment classes. Retention rates are higher. Graduation rates tend to increase, and also attendance rates tend to increase. And so these are all things that are situated in data and research. You'll note that on the background sheet once you, if you've already reviewed the policy. Dr. Travis Bristol, Winter, several other people who've contributed to this space have shown this time and time, year over year, in the arc of research that extends several decades that alludes to these findings. So one of the things that we've been engaged with, the Tennessee Education Research Alliance, they released a report the same year that we did in 2018. I know Dr. Jason Grissom has presented to the state board at one point and showed his research findings. We both released reports the same year. I guess, I would argue, the difference in the reports is the TERRA's report is very quantitative in nature, our report is very qualitative in nature, but they both complement each other because we had similar findings that we found. And so here were numbers, where emphasis were developed, and then here were actual lived experiences and voices that were conveyed in conversation, and we were immersed with some similar things. And so one of the things that stuck, that sticks out to me that I pulled from the report is that we have roughly fifteen percent teachers that come from racial, ethnic, diverse backgrounds in the state of Tennessee today, and roughly thirteen percent of those teachers are black, black men and women, with black men representing three percent and black women representing ten percent. However, about twenty-four percent of our students across the state are black boys and girls. And so that right there in itself kind of illuminates some of the disparity that exists within the reflection of our teacher workforce and our students that are represented. And then there were additional findings too, and I won't begrudge to take these, I'm sure you may have already heard them from Dr. Grissom, but you know, things that stood out to us were the link between the leader and teacher diversity, and then also racial isolation and the turnover rates that were associated with that. Those were things that stood out to us, because those are similar findings that kind of emerged from our report too as well. And so as we think about our report, you know, one of the things I really wanted to focus on when I began doing this work was we need to honor the voices and the lived experience of people. A lot of times data can tell us several things, but it doesn't really paint the true picture of a lived experience. And so when we began to study, we went across the state of Tennessee. We went to Chattanooga, we went to Knoxville, we went to Memphis, we did focus groups in Nashville. You know, we provided food and gave everybody gift cards to literally sit down and tell us their lived experience, both the successes and the opportunities in this space. This is extremely important because more than a third of Tennessee does not have a Latinx teacher in their district, and there's a quarter of districts that don't have a single black teacher in their districts. And in addition to that, many decisions that impact teachers and students from diverse backgrounds oftentimes are not made by them. Oftentimes, they could be made in spaces in decision-making power with people who don't reflect the backgrounds that they come from. And so in my personal experience of having been at certain spaces and tables, there was always a limit to the number of diverse teachers who were in those spaces that could actually lean in and provide perspective. So in our findings, what we found were very similar, again, to TERRA's report that teachers of color were feeling racially isolated in these schools. The leaders played a huge role in their support and also played a role in like who was able to access the building and the profession. Black females and teachers, black female teachers said that they faced gender systemic racism in schools, recruiting and hiring processing ancillary, and also limited the diverse candidates that had access to the schools. And many people stated that education prep providers did not prepare teachers from all backgrounds to engage in culturally competent conversations within buildings or within communities that they serve. And so these were things that were told to us that were very thematic across the state regardless of the regions that we were talking to educators in, and these were the findings that drive our work to this day. How do we shift the narrative? How do we move the needle? How do we provide value-added impact while also being actionable against these findings and really being strategic in how we trust them? So I started doing some digging and tried to, and one of the things, again, is like we want to really, sustainable and systematic change oftentimes is situated in legislative policy. When we're able to have opportunities to be able to do that, then we're in a position to where we can make things somewhat sustainable in some regards. And so I came across a report that the State Department was provided by the TDOE in January twelve, and to much of my finding that this was a requirement, that there was going to be an annual report that was produced around the status of minority classroom teachers in the state of Tennessee. And this kind of began my ideal of like, you know, what does the work need to look like to push this forward? And so this was my first introduction to the legislator that was introduced in nineteen ninety-three, which originally was situated around the recruitment and retention of African-American teachers, but more recently has been updated from last year to include educated diversity holistically in twenty nineteen. But this was the inception that allowed me to realize that there was actually legislation that existed that required the commissioner to create an educated diversity policy. And so this being said, a lot of the work that we're doing now centered around educated diversity is driven by this.
Hey, Diaries, may I interrupt you for one second? We fixed some of the formatting issues on the PowerPoint, and if you don't mind pausing for just one second, Elizabeth will swap it out.
Okay.
Sorry about that. I think when we merged them all together, the formatting got a little wonky, and it'll be easier to talk through if it looks the way you intended it to, I'm sure.
Got you. Got you. Thank you. Appreciate that. I was rolling with the flow.
You're doing great. You're so flexible. Any questions while we get our technical side sorted out?
I don't have questions at this juncture, but I do want to make some comments. When you were showing the slide from TERRA with their recommendation for the teacher recruitment strategies, it strikes me as critically important, and we've been talking about it as a board for quite some time, in particular with the annual report that we produce, report card that we produce on ed prep programs. So I think what we have to continue to realize is that we're all in this together, and we all have a role to play. And for EPPs to attract students into education, there are people who have a role to play, and it starts at home. And that's for all ethnic backgrounds, all people of all colors. There are lots of students who are discouraged from taking the path of education, and it starts at home, and then it continues in education. It continues in schools where teachers are actually discouraging their students from taking that path. And so to me, there is a professional development that has to take place to address the teachers and making sure that they're given all the tools that they need to, first of all, not discourage students, because that might be the right path for a child. And they are modeling behaviors that would, we would hope, lead a child to want to take that path. And in general, many times, students are just afraid. Public speaking is one of the biggest fears in anybody's life in standing before a group and teaching. And so when you take someone who's not being encouraged, they're being discouraged, that there are words that are said at home and in school that discourages a child to take that path. So I think we need to look at it from a board perspective and talking with the department to ensure that there's professional development for teachers in the classroom. And that's for not discouraging, and it can be combined and with diversity training. I've had a lot of discussions with people about diversity training, and unless you take the time to work with the teachers that are in the system as well as the administrators, I don't know that the changes that you're recommending through TECA would happen, how you feel and how you were made to feel as a teacher in the classroom, and you were not feeling welcomed, and turnover is high. So I think there's some opportunities there as well, professional development on both points. So I'll stop there, because I think we have your PowerPoint ready to go.
Madam Chair, this is Bobby. Could I ask one question with regard to that?
Absolutely.
You know, the EPPs do look at retention of teachers one year, two years, three years down the road, and you made the comment that the turnover rate was very high for teachers of color. Is the primary reason for that because of those findings of the discouragement, that they don't feel like that they're, I mean, why do you think the turnover rate is higher among teachers of color than of other, say, white teachers or something?
Yeah. Sure. I think it's all encompassing. I think that's a part of it, but I also think too that there are some systemic barriers in place that prevent people from gaining licensure. There are people right now who are operating on conditional licenses and are not in positions to pass their licensure exams to be fully teachers. So some people may get a conditional license for a year or two. They're able to operate and train and, I'm sorry, train, support, and teach students, and then if they don't have those requirements completed within the timeframe that's allotted, then they're obviously, you know, required to be let go from the profession. So I think the barriers to, the barriers and the lack of support in some instances to be able to get over the threshold of getting past some of those licensure exams and requirements is one area. I also think that there is the opportunity to be able to create culturally affirming and also supportive environments for people who are transitioning to this profession. If we be honest with ourselves, every year that EPPs are in existence, people are graduating, and somebody from somebody's education prep program is going into a district and a school where they're going to be the only person from a racial, ethnic, diverse background on staff, or one of a small few. How do we ensure that the space that they're going into is welcome and is going to be willing to support them as one of a few, if not the only one? And that's just a reality. So I think it's, you know, part of that support is an issue, but then there's some systemic issues around licensure, and I also think that, you know, getting through programs is another thing too as well. So I think turnover tends to be high because of those issues, and I think that there's opportunities to address them in ways that it won't change the narrative in the next year, but there are intentional strategies and supports that can be implemented that we can allow us to move the needle in a very systemic way over the course of time.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I'd like to point out, before you move on, Dr. George, that all of the board members received an email from Dr. Lisa Sagumni, and this was a recommendation that came from the Deans for Impact Coalition. We're not going to go into that right now, but they have several recommendations that address some of the systemic issues that you mentioned, and our board will certainly consider that, whether we do that on first reading or even in second reading of this diversity policy, or even defer it to our licensure and ed prep subcommittee first. There's work to do on our part, so I just wanted to mention that since you mentioned the systemic issues. So thank you.
Absolutely. No problem. Absolutely. So just jumping back in quickly here, currently where we stand with the most recent data that's available, and to be clear here, the, you know, data around the racial, ethnic, diversity of teachers has only been made available more recently publicly at the data downloads within the last couple of years. And so this is from the most recent data download that's available, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty academic year. We have roughly fifteen, and this is three percent people have been unidentified. Most of the identification comes through the Tennessee Compass, where people are self-identifying themselves. But roughly fifteen percent of our, fourteen point five, fifteen percent of our educated workforce right now in the state of Tennessee identifies as a racial, ethnic, diverse background. When we couple that and we look at it longitudinally, so the data that I pulled from was from the Tennessee Status of Minority Classroom Teachers Report from two thousand and twelve. They had data in there that represented all the way back to nineteen ninety-eight. And then the more recent data that you see, sixteen, seventeen, nineteen, twenty, is from the Tennessee data downloads on the Tennessee Department of Education website. I highlighted the first three columns only because within that report, when we're talking about teachers of color, teachers from racial, ethnic, diverse backgrounds, those years, they only reported African-American teachers, because all other teachers from other racial, ethnic backgrounds were less than one percent. So when you're looking at nine point nine, ten, twelve point four two, those are all African-American teachers at that point in time. However, when it says students of color, those are all students that represent and make up racial, ethnic, diverse backgrounds, from all backgrounds other than white. And so as you can see over the years, that gap has widened, is widening. Currently, right now, we have over a million students in the state of Tennessee. We're right a little bit above thirty-nine percent of our students that identify as anything from a racial, ethnic, diverse background, and then again, roughly fifteen percent. And so if you look at it over the arc of the last almost twenty years, a little over twenty years, educated diversity has increased about five percent, while students have increased almost fifteen. And it's on track to continue to increase, and that gap is going to continue to widen. And so if you, you made a perfect point earlier as it relates to ed prep providers. This is the research, I'm sorry, the research, this is the data that's available for ed prep providers. Again, when you look at two thousand and nine and two thousand and ten, these are numbers that were pulled from the report from two thousand and twelve, and they actually identify their completers within their program that were from racially diverse backgrounds. And then currently, the most recent data is the data that's available on the education prep report card online. And so you can see, as you look at the total candidates and then the candidates that were racially diverse within those, you can see some areas are increasing, but when you factor in the idea that their candidates have increased, that when you factor in the idea that their candidates have increased, that, that margin is roughly about the same. Um, and then there's some who have decreased over time. And so as we think about this continually, uh, you know, this is an issue that we have to address from all areas, ed prep, students that are in our classrooms, students that are aspiring that are in education prep programs, and then also current existing teachers that are in the profession. Uh, we have to have some of the strategies in place that address all of those things. Um, and so when we combine this, what you're looking at here is, here are ed prep providers, here are the students within the nearest district or the district that the ed prep providers, uh, operates in, and here are the teachers. And within that, here are the racially diverse percentages among those populations. So if you're looking at Austin P., here's their completers, here's their students, and here's their teachers. And similarly, obviously, we all know this, I'm, I'm assuming here, uh, that the, the efforts that we have in place currently aren't keeping up with the growth that districts are making continually over arcs of years. And mind you, when we look at this data, this is from, you know, the most recent data that we have available for all of these areas, but if you go back twenty years ago, you know, Clarksville Montgomery County School District, um, was thirty-four percent racially diverse, and their teachers were five, almost six percent racially diverse. So there's been some increase there, but this is over a twenty-year period. And if you look at the student population, the student population, again, very similar to the previous slide, is just outpacing, is almost double and tripling instances in some areas. Same thing in Knoxville, Chattanooga with Hamilton County, uh, Giles County in, in Pulaski, Tennessee, uh, same thing there. Like, there's been a growth there where this student population has gone from sixteen percent in the last twenty years to almost twenty-two and a half, but this teacher population, uh, as far as identifying as racially diverse, has remained the same. It was three point nine twenty years ago. And so there's opportunities and work potentially to be done there. Similar things there with MTSU and Rutherford County, East Tennessee State and Washington, Trevagon Metro and Christian Brothers. So again, the theme here is that we have an opportunity here to be, to be, to be bold and position ourselves as the leaders in this space, but it's going to take some intentionality and strategy, um, to be able to do that. And we've already kind of started the inception of some of that with the efforts that we've made in more, in more recent years. So all that to say is, w, w, we, we have to become more intentional how we're addressing that. I think this is important, and that's one reason why we're launching a, uh, educated diversity campaign. It's a movement called Twenty by Twenty-Five, to establish a statewide goal for increasing teacher diversity twenty percent by the year twenty twenty-five. Now, the reason why this is extremely important, right now, we don't have a statewide goal, but holistically and, and nationally, there is no state that you can look to that is, that is nailing this, that is absolutely a leader in this space. Tennessee has the opportunity to be that, that state. When we think about, um, uh, every challenge that Tennessee has risen up against, uh, we've all, we've always done it in a very similar fashion. We, we relied on data, we implemented intentional strategy, and we were persistent in our execution. And so when we think about these things, when we created goals around ACT, increasing our ACT rates statewide, Drive the Fifty-Five, uh, higher education degree attainment, we created goals associated with these things, and we progress monitor every year. Every year, we were giving reports to say, this is how close we are, this is where we started, this is where we're going. Graduation rates, we did the same thing. Read to Be Ready, when that program was in, um, was, um, was, uh, in circulation, we did the same thing there. We've not done the same thing as it relates to teacher diversity. And we know nationally that this is an issue that's growing and growing and growing. So here's an opportunity to take the same intentionality, the same energy, the same efforts that we did with graduation rates, ACT rates, uh, Read to Be Ready, Drive the Fifty-Five, even with our NAIC scores. We identified the gaps in the areas, and we went after it with intentional strategy to be able to be the, the fastest improving state in the nation. We can do the same thing here and position ourselves as a leader in increasing educated diversity like no other state in this nation. And so how can TECA help? One of the things that we're going to, that we're already working on and done is, we've taken the data that's available from the data downloads, uh, and we've created a, a, a repository of tools, online tools, that not made publicly yet. We're planning to launch the tools once we officially launch the campaign at the top of the year. But with those tools, you'll be able to, uh, one of the tools on there is a map where you'll be able to hover over districts, and when you hover over the district, it'll give you the breakdown on the total students in the district, the total teachers in the district, but what is the racial diverse makeup of the students and the teachers? And then it will project a parity goal between the students of color in the district and the goal that the district needs to, 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 to assume to create parity with the teachers in the district. And so if you look at Murray County here on the left, uh, their projected goal is twenty-two percent, because right now they're hovering around, uh, eight point eight percent and thirty point seven percent, both respectively, uh, teachers and students from racially diverse backgrounds. And so it's one thing to help people think about the districts, uh, I'm sorry about the goals, but these goals, I will argue, and I will also, uh, comment that they are kind of in alignment with the campaign that we're launching. So we're not expecting Murray County to make up twenty-two percent in, in one year. We're saying, here's twenty-two percent, here's our overarching goal of Twenty by Twenty-Five. What part of that twenty-two percent going into the year twenty-one, twenty-two could you be responsible for? If you're at eight point eight, is it possible and realistic that you can increase your educated diversity by two percent within that year with strategies implemented? And so it's one part helping you think around the goal that's realistic to the, to your contextual area, because every area is going to be different. And then two, what is the strategy needed there to be able to make this happen? Every area is going to be different. Murray County's not going to do, be able to do the same thing that Johnson, um, County may be able to do. When we look at Johnson County, and there's a, a disparity gap of about twenty-two percent, it might not be, they, they may not be able to utilize a Grow Your Own model from their existence, their existing staff, because they may not have the staffing capacity to do it. Their strategy may be, how do we impact our rising population of students that are racially diverse in order to transition them into the profession? How do we tap into those juniors and seniors that are sitting in the classrooms, knowing that this is going to be a four-year return on investment? But it's, it's, it's a strategy that, obviously, if we're investing in students that are from our community to come back into our community and teach, we probably have a better chance of, 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 um, increasing our educated diversity as opposed to trying to recruit people to an area that they may not absolutely come to from external spaces. And I know that's a challenge that a lot of people come up against, and they say, hey, I don't know how to bring people to my community. Well, that may not be the strategy for your community. The strategy may, in fact, be to say, hey, this is going to be a four to six-year strategy, but we're going to tap and invest into our rising student population in order to invest them in a way where they can come in, you know, come back to the community. And so how can we be strategic, how we, how we support moving forward? So again, how can we help? We want to be able to provide access to a toolkit, technical assistance for LEAs and EPPs, both thinking how we can support in ways that drive recruitment, but also intentional strategies that lend itself to contextualize to the local context, to wherever the situation exists within the EPP or LEA that they're up against, so it can be centered around the, uh, uh, specific challenges, and then ongoing and continual training of how we can be able to move the leverage here in a systemic way. Um, some of the suggestions that we have here, uh, one, we recently launched an Educated Diversity Advocacy Council, uh, so in front of the, um, the, uh, educated prep, um, I'm sorry, in front of the Educated Diversity Policy that you'll be reading, uh, members of that council had an opportunity to provide feedback to the State Department, and then we also intend to be enabled in a position to provide additional feedback after this first read as well. Uh, but some of the suggestions that we want to create, uh, that we want to offer up in order to be able to do the work, we still, uh, in a very systemic way, uh, are data transparency on the TDOE Report Card website. Currently, right now, and the policy is written that, um, data, uh, transparency will be available via the TDOE website. Currently, it's available via data downloads, but there's a, and right now, I know that they're doing, they're doing updates to the report card, but there's an opportunity to be able to take that data that's available on a data download and make it visual, same way that we do with the student demographics, uh, for teacher diversity on the state website, uh, on the, on the TDOE Report Card website. Um, currently, right now, there's a recommendation for a bi-annual report on educated diversity. We strongly recommend that it be an annual report. As you've seen in the data previously, these numbers are changing year to year to year to year to year. And in order for us to be able to, uh, to, 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 to proficiently progress, monitor, we need that data available, one, uh, public available so it can be viewed online, but two, reported out in a way where it's constantly giving us the insight of, of how we're moving the needle in this direction. Examples of this are the reports that New York does and also Oregon does. Both of them do reports that go to their governors statewide, and they, and it's explicit to, uh, educated diversity within their state. Um, a public report on a return on investment. So we think about, you know, we've made investments before as it relates to, to educated diversity. I remember back in two thousand seventeen, there were Diversity Innovation Grants. What's the return on investment there? And we're putting out money, how are we, how are we also reporting the efforts of the money that we put out? You know, we put out millions of dollars, and, um, I know more recently, there were Grow Your Own Grants, and we all know Grow Your Own is also a response to educated diversity. And I, I'm sure that this is a thought, and I, they, it, I don't know if it was named, but I'm sure there, there will probably be a report on the back end of that. But even those earlier efforts that we've already made, what are the, what are the, um, the reportings on those efforts that would, we know that we're moving the needle in a systemic way? Who's going to own this work at the department? Ownership? Previously, as you've seen on the report, uh, Morgan Branch was the former Director of Recruitment and Retention for Minority Teachers. Is there room and space, uh, at the department to create a space and opportunity for someone to own the work in that capacity? That way, there, there can be a constant pulse on moving this work forward. I know, uh, the Division of Human Capital is, is, is committed to this work, but I wonder if there's an opportunity for someone to actually own it. Um, and then, again, our other suggestion is us partnering with districts to provide technical assistance with goals and strategy. So as you transition into reviewing and reading this policy, a couple of questions that I will offer up that you, that you possibly think about as you're reviewing this. Again, who's going to be responsible for owning this work? Who's going to be responsible for reporting? Obviously, we know that districts are going to be reporting to, um, potentially reporting goals to the State Department and, and, and strategies that they'll utilize. Um, how does reporting look? How does it show up, um, from district? And then what, considering the areas that you support, um, what about creating goals and implementing strategies for the communities that you represent may cause, uh, may pose a challenge, uh, for those communities? So again, what, what about creating these goals and implementing strategies as it lends to educated diversity may pose a challenge for the communities that you represent, uh, as a board member? So, uh, these are, again, questions just to, to, just to, to, that hopefully bear some fruit, to have you think through a little bit as you're reviewing the policy. Um, and again, thank you for the opportunity to be able to present and share. I appreciate it.
Dr. George, thank you so much for being with us today. You've given us a lot to think about. Many of these areas that you've touched on today, we certainly have been in discussion before, and certainly we want to move the needle in the right direction. We're not about talk, we're about action, and so we certainly deeply respect your recommendations and will consider those as we move forward. Are there any other comments or, or questions before we move to the Commissioner's Update?
Madam Chair, Darrell Cobbins. Um, I'd just like to thank you for this work. I think, um, it's important that we have, um, um, a perspective and knowledge of how we are achieving diversity and inclusion across the state, and I was happy to see the, uh, sort of geographic representation of that data, because I think it's important that we know where our strengths and, uh, areas for improvement are, uh, with regard to districts across the state. And, um, thank you for your hard work and look forward to seeing your launch at the top of the year. Thanks a lot.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Madam Chair, this is Sarah. Just very quickly, I also want to reiterate what Darrell said. I've loved working with Darice over the last few years, and we're so lucky in Tennessee to have an organization like TECA, who's doing such excellent work and being recognized at the state level, the national level. They've gotten all kinds of funding because of the work that they're doing, and I'm just, I'm super excited to see this continue to come together, Darice, and appreciate you updating us today on your thoughts. We're excited about the potential for this policy and hopeful to continue to push it forward in meaningful ways. So just thank you for your partnership and for always being so willing and proactive to reach out, to help us think about these issues, and like Lillian said, really make sure that we're properly not just talking. So thanks again. Look forward to working together.
Thank you, Dr. Morris.
Thank you.
This is Larry Jensen. I have a question for, are we going to spend some time on this in detail, uh, in, in some planning session, or are we thinking about that?
This is Sarah. We absolutely can. Um, again, uh, we, uh, are, need to move on now, but the policy is up on first reading, and it may be something that we can come back to in more detail in February. So appreciate the suggestion, Larry. We can make that happen.
I'd love to dig in where we've got time to talk about it and think about it. I, I appreciate the work you're doing and, uh, very, very supportive, but I, I think getting, uh, a little more discussion for us as a board might be very helpful. That's my suggestion.
Great suggestion, yep.
I agree. Yes, I agree. Thank you for that, Larry. Moving on, thank you so much again. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the Commissioner's Update from Commissioner Penny Schwinn. I'll turn it over to you. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Herman Harkraven, and good morning, everybody. I'm happy to be here. I have just a few quick comments, I, and I'm really rooted in some of the, um, follow-up questions and framing, um, that I received around areas of interest for you all. But I do want to leave the majority of my time, in case you all have questions for the department. I know we've got some folks later, um, today, but, uh, first, or earlier today, but first and foremost, wanted to give you an update, um, related to assessment and accountability, um, coming off of the, the governor's announcement a few weeks ago, and kind of what direction we're moving in, what it means, and certainly what it doesn't mean, uh, and then, um, open it up for, for questions that you all may have on any number of topics. Um, but I do want to start, um, by thanking, uh, you all, the board. Um, we've been in, um, and counting, uh, uh, number, quite a few districts, uh, since the school year started, so, um, we are heading into, I think, district number forty, um, going into this weekend, next week, so just about forty districts in, in this first quarter of the school year, um, even more schools than that, so seeing, um, hundreds and thousands of students, um, and, and wonderful teachers. But really appreciate, um, how many folks have joined on those meetings, in those visits. Uh, I think it's been incredibly important to be able to be on the ground and see what's happening, and so just wanted to say a special thank you to, to you all. Um, I think it shows, um, how many people are committed to our schools. I know it matters to folks, um, but I did want to highlight that, that, um, it has been particularly, um, helpful and meaningful for me. Want to particularly, uh, call out, uh, the Chair and Vice Chair. Um, it's, it's been fun. We've delivered books, we have, um, sat on carpets, we have seen PE, we've seen all sorts of things, so it's been great. Um, as it relates to assessment and accountability, uh, the governor, as you all know, made an announcement a couple of weeks ago, um, in partnership with the department, related to the direction, uh, that we think is important for the state as it relates to both assessment and accountability. So for assessment, um, you know, the state, and certainly you will hear this from me and the department very clearly, it's really important to know where our kids are, um, especially when we're thinking about school building closures at the end of last year, and we didn't have an assessment appropriate for that time period. Um, some districts who had the capacity and the existing resources to immediately transition into remote learning, and then many did not. Many didn't have connectivity for families. Everyone was in a different place, um, and certainly, people have been working well over time, um, throughout the summer to get ready for this year, understanding how much work needs to be done to effectively educate our students in a very, very different environment. And our school staff, our district staff, has been working hard for months to get to that really important opening day and through this first quarter. What I have seen, and it's why I wanted to mention the school visits, is every district and every school looks a little bit different, but what has been very clear is the amount of, of work that has gone in, the number of procedures and policies and ways that folks have been creative and flexible to provide that excellent education. Um, we want, we certainly want to make sure that we are both honoring the, the results of that work, because I do believe it will be very positive. We will see student achievement and growth accelerate this year. Um, but I also think it's going to be important for us to identify areas where additional supports and resources may be needed, and we can do that when we have the data and information. Now, that being said, what we do with that information is a really important conversation and question, and when we think about the purpose of accountability, um, and why we have it, um, year to year, it really is about saying, here's a standard, and how have we improved against that standard each year? Um, but it does assume some level of consistency between year to year, and this year is like, unlike any other. Um, we know that, uh, the conditions under which our teachers are teaching, our schools are open, um, our families and students are being educated in whichever seat they're sitting in, um, it, it looks different. And what we've seen, and frankly, what I've seen, is that can look different month to month, week to week, and day to day, sometimes hour to hour. Now, we have classrooms where teachers have gone from complete remote to some of their kids are remote, some are in person, to fully in person, and within all of those, students who are, might be rotating in and out because of quarantine or, or some other, um, contextual issue. And, and so when we think about that, the way that we use the data really does need to be about how we inform our practice, how we think about what our students, our staff, our schools, and our districts need, what they need, and how we can be helpful. It is not to say, how do we benchmark and then hold accountable compared to last year, which was not the same as the year before? And so, directionally, I think where the Governor and I would like to see the state move is really saying, this year is about information, it's about data, it's about reporting that information and data, and then making really good informed decisions about how to be helpful and supportive to our school and district communities. This is not necessarily, and I don't think it is the year to have our traditional accountability run in the way that has more consequences for lower performance or not, lack of growth, et cetera. It's just, we're not going to have, it's just not appropriate. Now, that is something that we are committed to partnering with the legislature on, that does require legislative action and changes in our statute, and so, certainly understand that that is a statement about where the administration stands. I will say, though, I have been so encouraged and feel so much optimism about what I am hearing from our legislative partners, what I'm hearing from Education Committee members, and across the board, and that's one of the reasons I think Tennessee continues to accelerate, is we have elected officials and public officials who care deeply about being ambitious and feasible and realistic. And so, I have heard a shared commitment to moving in this direction related to assessment and accountability, and I feel optimistic that we will find a really good solution. The administration and specifically, the department's role in this is, based on what is discussed with the legislature, we certainly want to make sure that our responsibility, which is submitting a waiver to the West Department of Education, that that, that we do that in concert with and in a way that matches whatever potential statute change or legislation that the, that our elected officials consider. So, if the legislature considers a certain statutory change, we would want our waiver to US DOE to match that. So, there is some timing, there are some timing issues there, and we would look to that as we go into session. So, as of right now, it is directional. It is certainly, I think, a value that we hold and want to express. We also want to relieve some of the anxiety in the greater ecosystem around what accountability would look like, but please know that that will, that will require several months of work between now and session. I also want to note that this is about kind of the consequence and some of the negative connotations around accountability, but I do think it's really important that we maintain some of the positive components, so things like reward schools or distinctions, ways that if a school is showing growth and acceleration, they should be able to exit priority status. They should be able to have some of those positive or reward-based components. We certainly heard from schools last year, when I'm on visits, where the school, they said, you know, if we could have taken that test, we know we would have been a reward school again, or we know we would have had, we would have been able to exit priority school status. And so, we certainly want to make sure that we continue to offer those, I think, those celebrations, those opportunities to highlight success. We don't want to have two years where schools who have continued to show that kind of growth and progress aren't able to do so. In the same way, we want to make sure that our teachers have flexibility in how we think about evaluation and that work. It really is about honoring our educators, our district officials, our superintendents, our families, and everything that they're doing. So, that's how we're thinking about it right now. I think it's the direction we'd like to move. We will work with the legislature very closely on the right language, make sure stakeholders are involved and being able to provide feedback. I want to say a special thank you to our districts. Superintendents have been, I think, very, very ready and open and engaging in this conversation. We've received a lot of feedback from our district leadership, and so, want to make sure that is publicly stated, that they have been very engaged and have been really wonderful advocates for their local communities, as they have been throughout the pandemic. And then, finally, as we move into the EOC space, I want to make sure to be really clear about what I think the difference is between the fall EOC administration and then what we are likely to see in the spring. Now, I think everyone wishes they could have seen into the future. That would be wonderful, especially in times like these, and so, I certainly do not have some extraordinary ability to do that, but I am hopeful and optimistic that this spring, we will, we will be in a different space as it relates to the pandemic, and so, I want to be clear that I don't think anything that we're seeing in the fall should necessarily be a complete translation into what we would expect to see in the spring. But the department is taking steps to lengthen the administration window, so that way, districts have more weeks in order to be able to administer the assessment, especially because we know that many of our districts had to extend their school years to be able to accommodate a later start. So, we want to make sure that teachers can teach for as many instructional days as possible before the test happens and not have kind of that time on the back end. So, we're going to make that window a lot longer. We think that will accommodate district calendars. We also hope that it can accommodate, if you need more days to test for distancing, things like that. We are going to work really hard to keep reporting as tight as possible so that we don't have a delay in reporting, or at least, we minimize that delay. And I think that in the fall for this EOC window, we're offering some flexibility to allow for when students can test, for those students who may be given where we are with cases, for those families who might not want their students to come in to test or might be in a different scenario with their own family needs, that those students have opportunities in the spring as well. And so, we do think that this is going to be an important testing window. We certainly are providing, as I said, lots of flexibilities, multiple testing windows, et cetera, and we want to make sure that we address kind of the needs of this fall-winter testing that are going to look very different in the spring, that we'll continue to work towards solutions to maximize participation in the spring and make sure everybody is healthy and supported. The thing that I want to note for everybody, though, is that some of the work that is ahead is about trying to find solutions around assessment. Have had some great conversations with superintendents about not just the extended window, but how do we make sure that we provide the accommodations and flexibilities for families who might be fully remote all year, still feel like there is a safe, healthy, productive environment where students can have their assessments, that they're getting that data back quickly so it is meaningful, et cetera. So, I just want to kind of acknowledge and highlight that there is a real place for the board to be incredibly helpful in kind of participating in those conversations, in the way that you talk to and work with your local districts and communities around the importance of getting that information, because it does drive so many of our decisions here at the department, so many decisions of policymakers, and so many ways that we think about resource needs and allocation. And so, look forward to having those conversations, especially in the subcommittee, in the weeks and months to come. On both that, happy to open it up to any questions that folks have and appreciate, appreciate the time today.
Are there any questions or comments for the Commissioner?
Madam Chair, this is Bob.
Yes, Bob.
Couple of comments and one question. First, I want to thank the Commissioner for, again, inviting us to participate in those school visits. I know a lot of board members work, and it's difficult for them to get there, but if you can, you really learn a lot. And I think about our recent visit to Chattanooga with Dr. Brian Johnson, visiting Woodmore Elementary School. You talked about schools going off the priority list, and that was a school, I think, that's been on the priority list for like ten to fifteen years. You talked about doing things right. You know, if they had the testing this year, they were very confident that they were going to be off the priority list. Although, one thing that was raised that really highlighted something to me that I hadn't thought about it, is they get extra funding being on the priority list, and their concern, and they expressed, is once, if they went off the priority list, it's like falling off a cliff. And so, a lot of the money that they were using for this intervention, they would lose. But I think that's something that we need to work together collaboratively with us, the legislature, the federal government, or whatever, and figure out how, you know, we can, and they even brought it up, just kind of gradually reduce that. They're not saying, don't take it away, but don't do it all in one year. So, that's, that's something that I hadn't really thought about and wouldn't have known if we hadn't have been to the school visit. So, that's, those are my comments, and thank you for that. I did have one question. What are you hearing with regard to technology accessibility across the state? Are people feeling better about it now, or is there still a big gap there?
Yeah, that's a great question, and I certainly, I want to first just validate, echo, and co-sign on your earlier comments. I think there's some real solutions that we need to be able to find on kind of the gradual reduction of resources, so I appreciate you bringing that up. For technology, one, we are seeing a significant increase in device accessibility for students, particularly third through twelfth grade. We had some delays because of some federal embargoes and related to kind of a chip in a computer, and certainly, as you can imagine, districts across the country are all, and frankly, businesses are all ordering computers at the same time. So, we're kind of at the very tail end of districts who are still getting some of those deliveries, and they've been, I think, thoughtful in who they've allocated devices to and for what reasons, but we are seeing a major increase in the number of devices. We continue to have challenges with connectivity, though, and I think some of those challenges, frankly, seem to be less around whether or not there are funds available for it, and much more about the operational logistics of getting connected. So, if there is not high-speed internet available to the community, sometimes it doesn't help to have other options if you can't get cell service either. So, we are seeing that there are still pretty significant gaps in our most rural communities, where the solutions are very, very difficult because they just cannot get connected to the internet, and they're being creative about bringing the computers in, downloading a lot of videos and content, and then sending those devices back with students so they still get videos and lessons and things like that. But it is not the same as live instruction, and so, we, you know, I think one of the things I'm hearing a lot from the legislature that I would say I strongly agree with is, how do we think about high-speed internet as a public utility, something that everybody has access to, and what are the steps there? That is not limited to, certainly not limited to public education, and so, I expect that will be a state and national conversation, but that's where I'm hearing more of the concern. I'm hearing less on device access outside of just kind of delays in shipping, and I think a lot of the grant funds have been really helpful. We used all of that fifty million dollars that the Governor allocated, and I know a number of our districts have used their S.R. and CARES money for that. So, the thing that I would point out to you all, that I would love to be able to discuss in future meetings, is one, kind of that public utility side of high-speed internet, but two, is now we have, you know, hundreds of thousands of devices in state, but those are all one-time funds, and we know that devices, especially with our elementary school students, that don't do that last forever. And so, how are we thinking about using this investment, the way we're thinking differently about educating our students, teaching and learning? What does that ongoing sustainability look like for purchasing devices and replacement devices? They typically last three to five years. The state will continue to maintain these very low-rate contracts we have for replacement and leasing, but that will be something that I, you know, I assume that will be brought up either in the legislature, certainly, the department will be talking about it pretty openly, and certainly, the BEP Review Committee. So, that's just something I've heard from superintendents and have thought about personally, about how do we, how do we not just make this a moment in time, but actually get to a point where we can replace and continue this work?
So, Commissioner, on the public utility discussion, what comes to mind to me is, because this is not just a localized or state issue, because it is a national challenge, we can all speak to what happens in our own homes, and when we try to get on into a meeting, I get buffered all the time, I have two Wi-Fi's, and, you know, have all the access that you would think that I need, but we do not have, high speed is just not happening in this country the way it needs to, and we have trouble with our homes. And so, we can imagine what it's like for children who are in rural homes. So, to me, it seems like something like a task force for Tennessee, but again, I think there's a huge federal component of this. So, you as the Governor and his, rest of his administration, they have had conversations around, how do we do our part to make sure that this is raised up to the highest possible level? Because we can do our part for Tennessee, but we need that federal voice or leadership to help us solve this, because we cannot do it alone. We don't have enough money in and of itself. So, have you all had discussions about how to bring, the people who know how to make this happen, those that are in telecommunications and, you know, the internet world? I'll shut up, so you can answer me.
No, it's a great point, and yes, I think that this is going to be work that certainly the administration has talked a lot about, but frankly, you know, with the legislature, I think that I've heard from Chairman White, I've heard from other legislative leadership and certainly members, that this is important to them, especially when they think about the communities they represent. My sense is that because this goes so much broader than education, that will continue to be a statewide conversation of which education should be a part. But I think you're right, that when we think about federal stimulus funds, potentially a second package that kind of is on the table, off the table, and we'll see where, how the months progress, this access will be one of those really important and key parts. My sense is that this is something that I at least have gotten a good sense of, that folks want to take up as soon as possible, because we are seeing so many people still working from home. It has brought to light the real need, so I am optimistic and do think education would be part of that, that bigger conversation at the state level.
And of course, we're happy to be a part of that conversation in partnership with you. So, thank you. Thank you for that.
And I might add a couple of comments on that. Good, I mean, it's good news that Chairman White was re-elected, and I have been working on this broadband issue for a while, and I would tell you, it'd be pretty important for this board to be in touch with Senator Blackburn's office. I think she is co-sponsoring a bill, so I would encourage you to have some communication with her about the importance of this. I think this education, the agricultural business, the agribusiness in Tennessee, which is the largest revenue producer, is also one in need of access in a similar manner. It's hard to run a 21st century farm with no access. And then, thirdly, telehealth. That's the three issues. And also, and they, we can talk about this a little bit, but Senator Bowling is, State Senator Bowling is very, very interested in moving this along, and I think there is a tension now that's being paid to it because, and thankfully, this, the whole COVID thing with students has probably accelerated this, but we need to now execute on it. I would also encourage you perhaps with, with soon-to-be Senator Hagerty, to communicate with his staff as he builds it, of the importance of this issue. I think that, as the Commissioner Schwinn suggested, there are things afoot, but I think our advocacy for this at this moment is pretty important.
Thank you for that, Larry. I do agree with you wholeheartedly. Any other questions or comments for the Commissioner? Hearing none. Commissioner Schwinn, thank you so much for joining us and for sharing that update.
Of course. Thank you. Nice to see y'all.
See you, too. We'll move on to the next update, which is the progress on research goals for the 2020-21 Master Plan.
All right. Good morning, everyone. This presentation is an update on research-related, or research projects that are related to the 2020-21 Master Plan. There are also action steps related to the Master Plan that are more in the realm of policy changes or logistics and don't really fall under research, and we will have a more comprehensive update about those at the February meeting. For the moment, this is an update that's specifically about research.
And I do want to give a quick shout-out, sorry, Erica. Erica sent out the quarterly research update last Friday, and that afternoon, Vice Chair EB asked for a presentation to review it and have commentary, so Erica turned the presentation around in about three days. So, thank you very much, and Bob, we really appreciate your interest and are excited to discuss this.
All right. So, first, just a reminder of what the goals are in our Master Plan. These are the 2020 through 25 strategic goals that the board adopted earlier this year. The first three goals form a progression through K-12 education. We have an early literacy goal, we have a middle grades goal, and a high school goal. And then, the fourth and fifth goal are supportive of the first three goals. They are focused on high-quality educators and schooling options. So, the rest of this presentation will be organized around these five goals, and the research projects that I'm talking about are each related to one of these goals. So, starting with strategic goal one, this is the goal around early literacy. So, we, I currently have no research to report on Benchmark 1A, but regarding Benchmark 1B, which is about appropriate interventions for all kindergarten through third-grade students who are reading below grade level, we currently have a meeting scheduled with the Tennessee Education Research Alliance, or TARA, to discuss a research project on district's implementation of the current promotion and retention policy. So, this is a policy about whether students who are completing third grade should be promoted. Amy, do you have anything to add here?
Sure. I know the board's really gone in depth on the promotion and retention policy the last few times it's come up, and one question has always been, you know, if a student is not reading at grade level, they can be promoted if they participate in a research-based intervention. So, board members have asked, what are those interventions? How effective are they? How is this policy really being implemented on the ground? So, that's where we'd be looking for external support to look at the implementation of this policy. We can get the hard data, right, of like, how many kids are retained in a year? That's pretty straightforward. The question would be, why? And what has occurred to support them to that point? And then, for students who are below grade level who aren't retained, why aren't they retained? Were they getting their needs met? So, we're very interested in pursuing some sort of, like, quantitative and qualitative project there.
All right. So, moving on to strategic goal two, which is focused on middle grades success. Regarding Benchmark 2B, we have a research fellow with us this fall. He's a graduate student at Vanderbilt University's Peabody College. His name is Samuel Correa, and he is currently examining policies and practices in states that perform well or have shown strong improvement in eighth-grade NAEP scores. We know that Tennessee has seen great improvement in NAEP, but there's been some slowdown of the progress in our scores over over the years. And we're looking to see what other states are doing that have continued to make progress in eighth grade scores. So Samuel will be looking at findings from these other states and comparing their policies with Tennessee's policies in order to identify potential policy or rule revisions for the state board. This is a very broad project. And so we're really looking at his work as the starting point for this rather than the endpoint. So we will take whatever he finds for us and look for examples of things that we need to investigate more closely. On strategic goal three, our first benchmark here is about students achieving the Ready Graduate indicators, which are part of the Department of Education's report card. We are currently planning to work with the College Career and Technical Education Division of the Department of Education to prepare a report on access to post-secondary readiness opportunities, which could include industry certification, dual enrollment, advanced placement courses, and other opportunities that are identified in the Ready Graduate Indicator. That is an upcoming project. Another upcoming project we have is related to transition plans and high school and beyond plans. So this coming winter and spring, you will have state board staff reviewing states and districts that require plans like these to identify effective policies and practices.
Yep. One of the under benchmarks, I hate to echo, where we currently have a requirement in state board policy that eighth graders develop this four-year plan for high school. And then we kind of stop. There's not something that you have another real clear checkpoint in high school to say, how is my plan going? Has it changed? How does that affect what I want to do after high school? So in the strategic plan that the board adopted this summer, it was the first time that y'all really put a stake in the ground, saying there should be some kind of plan towards the end of high school about what students want to do next. So as Erica said, we're going to be looking into a couple other states. I know Washington State has this. Chicago Public Schools has something similar. What do their practices look like? And then how can we build a better bridge from what students are thinking about in eighth grade? That they don't just put that plan down and never come back to it again till 11th grade, but it's something that they can refine over time. So Ali Gaffey on our team is going to be digging into that.
So Amy, let me ask a question and follow up on that, because I know when I was in my former position with the Highlands Economic Partnership, I worked closely with the school systems here in my region. And eighth grade students were required to have a plan for high school, and certainly working with their guidance counselor. So it would seem to me that we may want to find out what are, what are the practices today across the state, as opposed to going off in, we should research, don't get me wrong, research what other states are doing. But let's find out what's in practice today and not assume that there's nothing happening, because we may find that it's fairly uniform across the state. It may not be. It may be in pockets. But I would suggest that we, we check home first. We look in Tennessee to see what the actual practice is. That's a recommendation.
That's a great point, Madam Chair. And that's certainly something that's part of the longer-term work plan here is taking, here's our, I really want to be able to go to those like school counselors and high school principals who are in the trenches on this and say, here's what the current policy is. Here's some examples of what's going on nationally. Let's hear from you, both what you're doing now, and also how realistic these things are as we think about them. There might be things going on in other contexts that do or don't work in Tennessee for some reason. So completely agree with you. It's thinking to be married. We can't just say, you know, we're importing the model from such and such place, when we could have some really great practices going on in Tennessee.
Right. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Bob.
Yes, Bob.
And I have to confess, I didn't go back and reread each one of our specific strategic goals. And I really appreciate what Erica has done, putting together this in such a short period of time on these research. But I was wondering, you know, we're looking at graduation requirements and, and, you know, how we should change graduation requirements. And does one of those, you know, is there some research work that needs to be done there? And does that fit in a strategic goal two or strategic goal three preparing students for graduation? Is that something that we ought to add on here?
That's a good question. Certainly happy to revisit it. I know we did a fair bit of that research last fall before we first convened the grad requirements working group. And then we really put that on hold in the spring. We heard from our directors of schools who are participating that they were underwater, as it was, just trying to figure out things with COVID. So after this board meeting, as we get the group back together, certainly happy to pose that question of, is the research that we had from last year still sufficient in answering your questions? Or are there other things we should follow up on?
Yeah, I think, I think that would be helpful, because I hear from districts, I think they really, and I think TSBA, I've heard from them, that they want to really focus, continue the focus on, you know, graduation requirements, and do we have the right ones? Should we be changing those? So, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to strategic goal four. This goal is around high-quality educators. We have a couple of things going on here. So currently, the Tennessee Department of Education is working with Dr. Matt Kraft of Brown University on a research initiative regarding educator supply and demand. They are also, over at the department, they have collected teacher vacancy data from districts. This is the first time that the department has directly collected this information from districts. And this is a new requirement that was created as part of state board policy 5.600, which is the strategic compensation policy. So we will be excited to see a report from them once they have finished compiling that data. It was just due from districts last week, so I know they are working on that right now. And then the second thing under this goal here is about improving retention of high-quality and effective teachers. An important aspect of that is teacher observation models. So the Master Plan calls for a third-party analysis of the effectiveness of the TEAM model and other state-approved observation models. TEAM has been in use for several years now in Tennessee, I think nearly 10. And so we are very interested in hearing from lots of stakeholders, including the Department of Education and districts, about their experience with TEAM and its usefulness for them. And we are also, we recognize that this is a very large project, and it does call, the plan does call for a third-party analysis. So we will be seeking grant funding to support this work beginning in 2021.
And Sarah, you were really the lead in implementing this model when you were at the Department of Education in the early 2010s. Do you want to speak a little bit to what you'd be hoping to think through here, what you'd be liking to find from this research?
Without going into too much detail, I just think, you know, historically, TEAM and the way we thought about giving targeted, individualized feedback to educators has been one of the biggest drivers of student achievement in our state. And I think it's been long enough since we started TEAM that we really, as a state, need to take stock of what's working, where the adjustments that might be needed, whether it's in sort of the training of evaluators or in the rubric itself. We've talked a lot about that over the years, but haven't made many changes. And I just, I'm interested in understanding better where the opportunities are to kind of refocus our efforts through TEAM as one of the best vehicles for kind of honing in on what's happening in every classroom across the state in terms of educators and students each day. So, you know, I don't go in with a complete vision for what I'm hoping to achieve, other than I think we need to have some dedicated time and research efforts, both qualitative and quantitative, focused on this again, so that we can make sure that we're maximizing the opportunities that we have in this evaluation model. So it's something I'm definitely very interested to look into. And I'll just take this opportunity to say, too, thank you to Erica and to Amy, because I think this is really exciting. We've also, as a board, talked for a while about trying to really marry the research efforts that we engage in with our strategic plan. And I think we're finally at a place where we're really able to do that nicely. And this quick presentation highlights some of the efforts that Erica is working on to make that a reality for us. So thank you for all you're doing here.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mike. Mr. Edwards, I believe that's you, correct?
Yes. Oh, that's my guy.
Your voice is very distinctive, so.
I apologize.
That's okay.
So I'm, I, I, I've been going back and forth as to whether I ought to talk about this. And I think I'm better. But I think I feel better. We have goals that we're being very deliberate about. One of the goals is 75% of the kids reading on grade level in the third grade. What I'm seeing is that we are planning for 25% of the kids not reading on grade level. Or we're okay with that. We will have achieved our goal if only 25% of the kids are not reading on grade level in the third grade. We have, I have been preached to forever, and it may have been an urban myth. It may have been something that never got validated in research. But if you're not reading on grade level in the third grade, it's not going to happen by, large percentage is not going to happen going forward, which takes me to go to of 60% being approaching or at grade level in the eighth grade, 60%. Now, I can see where the math would work, because we're not trying to say we're going to have more kids than 75% reading. But we're also saying, you know, we're okay saying that 40% are not going to be either approaching, which is a term I've never cared for either, but approaching or at grade level. Then we're talking about readiness. How are we going to have that number of readiness when our goal has 60, 40% of our kids not at grade level? It, it, it's, there's a distance here that I can't, I can't reconcile when we're going from goal one to two to three to, well, one to two to three. Now, help me understand why I'm wrong.
Well, Mike, I don't think you're wrong, so I don't want to jump in too quickly. But I'll just revisit a few of the discussions the board had when y'all were formulating these goals in the spring. Around the third grade reading goal, those two benchmarks, and Erica, if you don't mind going back to the benchmarks for goal one, are meant to work together where 75% of the kids are on track, so at grade level or better. And then the second one is that if they're reading below grade level, they're getting appropriate interventions. So something is happening for every student. Either they're there and they're at grade level, or they're getting an intervention that's based on evidence to help them succeed and to close that gap moving forward. I hear what you're saying that if it, if they've been getting strong interventions in kindergarten and first grade and second grade, you would really think or hope that we could be higher than 75% by third grade. But that's where the board landed when y'all were discussing it in the spring. And then for goal two, the third goal.
May, may, may I insert there?
Of course.
So at the time that we, the research was supposedly showing that if you're not reading at grade level at third grade, you're not going to get, was there a comma at the end of that instead of a period, unless you get intervention?
So there was actually a report from the department's research team in, gee, 16 or 17, it was a few years back, I could dig it up for you, on RTI implementation, so the intervention program, finding that districts that had high levels of fidelity with RTI implementation were more able to move students who were not reading at grade level in third grade up closer or at to grade level by fifth grade. So within two years, they were getting them to move forward. However, places that had less strong and rigorous implementation of their interventions were less likely to do so. So it's been several years since that was looked at or revisited, but there is some evidence that appropriate and aligned interventions to student needs can make a difference after third grade.
Madam Chair, this is Bob Ebi. Can I, maybe I can help out just a little bit?
Please, go ahead.
Mike, I think we all have the goal of having 100% of, of third graders reading at grade level in third grade. I think when we were making these goals, we wanted to make goals that were challenging but achievable. And so what we're saying is that by 2025, we want 70, we want to go from 35% up to 75%. And I think it's the same type of goal that, that, you know, the state has for X percentage being at, going to college by 2025. I think we want to be at 100%. And hopefully, and we meet this challenging goal by 2025, that we're at 75%. Then we can set a goal, our next five-year goal, we can say we can get at 100% by 2030.
Well, actually, from a management standpoint, I really get it. I, I think that's the reality of what we're dealing with. Although I would like to know what the baseline is today and what incrementally we've got to achieve each year in order to get to even 75% in five years, rather than waiting on a pathology report at the end of five years. But my heartburn is, I'm sitting here as a board member, saying that we're going to, we think that as a public education system, the legacy of the, and I'm talking about American education, all over the country, that we're basically admitting that we can't get T kids to read, we never have been, and we're going to get to doing it, it's going to take us five years to get them up to 75%. So we're here after 110, 20 years of public education, aspiring for 100%, hoping to get 75%. And that is as hard as a board member to sit there and go, you know, you know, because I'm basically writing off, even though intellectually, I know it's true, 25%, that's a whole lot of kids. You know, it's worse now than it would be at 75%. And the other thing I want to say, if we get to 60%, okay, in the eighth grade, that's really where we are right now in the ACT reading. I don't, if you look at the, and I know people aren't thrilled about the ACT score, let's just argue for the moment that if you're not reading, if you don't score, I have to argue, let's say if you don't score 19 in reading on the ACT, which is two points below what the, the data said, that you're really not going to be successful in any post-education training. Well, that's basically where we are today. So where are we moving the ball to if we're at 60% in five years?
So Mike, I'll jump in for a moment and just say, I agree with you 100%. I think every last one of us wants that goal to be 100%. And so we have to come back to it. And Amy has sent us just a note saying that she's willing to work with us to revisit the goals. And I think we certainly should do that, because I think we can say, we can make that decision. If we want to change these goals to 100%, I think we also need to know, what is it going to take to get there? And understand, for me, it's a root cause. Why is this the case? It's different for, you know, we have children who come to this country who do not speak English, and they're in the system, and the teachers, it might take them until they're into fourth grade before they can read, and they're ready to move on to the fifth grade. So I've heard different things anecdotally. And so I think, again, it gets back to, all of this is about research, research-based information. I think we can set the goal at the highest level, but what do we need to do to get there? Because it's addressing the issues, and RTI is certainly part of it. But it's the literacy materials, it's the instructional materials, it's how we teach teachers to teach, it's a variety of factors that, that enter into this picture. So to Amy's point to us, I think we should revisit these goals based on this conversation today, because we did agree to this when we were looking at the Master Plan and making a determination of what the goals are. But we don't have to stick to that. We can address it.
Everything you said is correct. I would say that English, second language, we're talking about, that's a cohort of it. We're talking about 40% of Tennessee. And I agree that, that we're looking at we're talking about forty percent of Tennessee, and I agree that we're looking at goals and realistic goals. What we're saying is, we have a goal without really thinking about, and we have some strategies, but we really don't, are thinking, we're thinking goals without really thinking about what is it going to take to get the vast majority of kids, certainly above sixty percent, ready to go to college, or go to get training, or go into the military, and then set our goals as to what those, those strategies that are going to be implemented are going to be. Right now, these are, these really aren't goals, they're aspirations, and I guess that's the part that bugs me, is we've got low aspirations calling them goals. If we are going to have aspirations, Mike Edwards is right, hundred percent. But if we got goals at seventy-five percent, that means we don't have the processes in place to get the job done.
So, I think we should continue this conversation. It's something we should not put to rest. I think we want to hear from the other board members, you brought to light something that we need to, to address, Mike, so I, you know, thank you for saying that, because I think, I'm not voting for everybody, but I think everyone would agree. We want every child reading on grade level, there's no question about that. So, do we change that goal? That will be a discussion. Amy, I'll turn it back to you and Erica to give your input as to what you recommend as the best way to move forward and address what Mike has brought to us today.
Sure, just really quickly, for broader process, we will start discussing the master plan for next year, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Beginning in March, probably, I'll send around a survey to get members' feedback on what should change, both in terms of annual action steps that we should be taking, but also if there's broader feedback on the appropriateness of benchmarks and goals. So, that would be a really great place to begin that discussion. So, happy to continue brainstorming, and Mike, maybe we could chat about it in the next couple of days here, the next couple of weeks, and anybody else who wanted to have further feedback as well. Because it really, it, y'all have master plans, so we had a lot of discussion about it this spring, but, you know, we're in this new world with COVID, and if you've had time to think about it and think through what this would look like to get there over the next five years, certainly want to be responsive to concerns you have.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Super great for me, Lillian, because I don't want to belabor it, but I think, you know, the issues Mike is bringing up are really important and sort of foundational to all of the things that we set forward in the master plan. And I'll be interested to see, you know, my understanding is that the literacy bill, some version of that is going to be coming back through the administration this year. I know it's a continued priority for them, and I do think we have to get even more tactical about sort of what it means to move our literacy numbers in particular, what does that mean for educator prep, what does that mean for our sort of sitting K-12 teachers? And I do think the literacy bill that the administration proposed last year had a lot of those sort of ideas in it. So, I think this has just got to be something we keep talking about and thinking about in terms of, not only the goal that we set, but to Mike's point, the work that it will take to reach any of these goals. Right now, we're so far below even seventy-five percent, that I think we've still just got a lot of work to do in terms of the tactical implementation of how we get teachers and students kind of growing in the same direction around high-quality reading instruction.
Very good, thank you, Sarah. I think we do need to move on. I do want to also thank Erica for pulling this together as quickly as you did. Clearly, we needed to have this discussion today, so it was important to be able to do that, so thank you for that, Amy. Thank you, as always, for your leadership.
There's two more slides if you have time, but we'll go through quickly.
I thought there were, but the way we've been acting, it's like it's over. Okay, go ahead, continue.
I'll, I'll go very quickly for the last two. So, this is just to continuing with goal four, there's a benchmark about counseling standards. We also are having our research fellow, Samuel, look into this, using data from the Tennessee Educator Survey Counselor Branch, to try to figure out the extent to which these counseling standards have been implemented across the state. Then finally, with goal five, we have, so the department is going to be submitting a report to the board on implementation of district's continuous learning plans. That interim report will be due in February 2021, so we will be looking forward to seeing that. We've also had, we recently had a meeting of the State Board Testing Accountability Subcommittee, and that will, that subcommittee will meet again in January, which is very relevant to this goal. And then finally, Nathan James is about to talk about this in greater depth, but the Tennessee Education Recovery and Innovation Commission had its initial meeting on October ninth, and Nathan will be talking about that next. So, I'm not going to go into detail about that at this time, but basically, that was my presentation, and you can expect a more comprehensive update on master plan progress at the February workshop.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Erica, Amy. Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, it is Nathan James with an update on the COVID-19 Education Recovery and Innovation Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nathan James, Director of Legislative and External Affairs for the State Board of Education. You may recall that Public Chapter 792, which was passed in the last couple of days of the legislative session, did create the Education Recovery Innovation Commission. They acknowledge in that piece of law that COVID-19 pandemic is going to affect academics and our kids for at least the next dozen years. It acknowledges the obligation to prepare our students and the degree of education in the midst of any pandemic, and it created this commission consisting of three members appointed by Speaker of the House, three by the Lieutenant Governor, the Speaker of the Senate, and three by the Governor. And the law is, is worth going over again, because it is extraordinary in its scope. It says, "The commission shall advise and make recommendations to the General Assembly, the State Board of Education, the Department of Education, the Higher Education Commission, and state institutions of higher education on strategies to close educational gaps resulting from school closure, and to modernize the state's educational structure from kindergarten to career, in order to create more flexibility in the delivery of education to students." When we last chatted with the members of the board, not all of the commissioners had been appointed. As it stands right now, of course, they have been appointed, and we did have our initiatives. To give you a flavor of who we're talking about, we've got former State Representative David Conley, he's a retired legislator and entrepreneur, got Dr. Marie Chisholm-Burne, she's the Dean of the University of Tennessee Health Science Center's College of Pharmacy. We've got Wayne Swet, who was an AT&amp;T businessman, as well as Director of the MBA Program from the University of Tennessee College of Business. Yolanda Jones, Yolanda is a really fascinating addition to this commission. She's the president of Rowan College of Applied Technology, she's the only person in the state that serves in that one for three institutions. Her appetite for this work is pretty extraordinary. Todd Dixon, who many of you know, he's the founder and CEO of, actually, in this morning's meeting, he has offered to host our next meeting. Joe Horn, who's Director of Schools down at Manchester City, he is a member and was elected Vice Chairman. Frank Rothermuth is President of Dark Construction, and that's a construction company in Knoxville. He's worked formerly in education. Dr. Robert Christopher Jones is the Chief of Staff at TriStar Centennial Medical Center, and he's a surgeon, and he was appointed by the Speaker of the House Representative. And then Paris Scarlett, who is the CEO of the Scarlett Family Foundation, which is an education reform philanthropic organization, and she was elected Chair of the commission. So, first of all, I'll say, the meeting we had was, was pretty extraordinary. It was great to get everybody together. Senator Hartgrove gave the initial welcome, made the point to the commissioners that while the State Board of Education staff is there to facilitate and to assist them, that we were very dedicated to their independence. That was followed up with a statutory overview, and then every commissioner got to talk a little bit about themselves and why they're there. Leah Guthrie from SCORE held up on that with the story of education reform from 2007 to 2020, which was immediately followed by, you know, a couple of very frank addresses, Chairman Mark White of the House Education, now-retired Senator Dolores Gresham, former Chairman of the Science Education Committee, former as of two days ago. And both of those folks gave really strong charges for the work of this commission, in terms of setting a vision for education over the next decade and beyond, and put note that this commission is not subject to election, they're not subject to reappointment, and so effectively said, "You, you come out with, with the ideas, and let us worry about how to make them into law." We had an informal, informal lunch at that point in time, and one of the things I told the commissioners then was that we take transparency around everything we do at the State Board of Education very, very seriously. And in the case of the Education Recovery Innovation Commission, that means I didn't make call number one to any of their commissioners to suggest that ex-person or white person should be the chairman or the vice chairman. All of that was left entirely to them. Now, within the constraints of the Open Meeting Act, which you all operate under all the time, that means that they have lunch, basically, in order to kind of see each other and figure out what actions they wanted to take. But they did that. When we came back, we had a discussion that was led by Dr. Morrison, talking about the state board's response, and what we've done in terms of reacting to COVID and the emergency rules that we've put together. And then, of course, our General Counsel went through the open meetings and open records requirements, and we had a discussion on commission meeting norms, and then we undertook the election of officers. After that, we adjourned. Now, what's the commission up to? The first deliverable for the commission is a January first deadline report on the impact of COVID-19 on education in Tennessee. It's been agreed by the Chair and the Vice Chair that this report, in its main substance, should be about five pages, K-12, five pages higher ed, the first page giving a legal overview and a one-page executive summary, and then all the addenda that may be required. Outreach at this point on the K-12 side, to the department, to SCORE, practically to labor and workforce development as well, because they, they deal, it's not exactly higher ed, but they deal with adult education programs, they're providing information as well. The Tennessee Homes Educator Alliance, the homeschool organizations, because as you can imagine, they've experienced fairly tremendous growth since the first of March, and any report that didn't necessarily deal with that would be, would be insufficient. So, there's a whole lot of outreach going on there. The Higher Education Commission has already produced their five pages or more of the traffic of higher ed portion, and that deals with statistical data in terms of what happened at these universities, how much of a loss in students that they receive in the student body, what the individual action plans were for the institutions of higher education, and giving a very good overall snapshot. So, our next steps as a commissioner to come together on the 13th of November, and it'll be at Valley in Nashville, because it's very hard, the members really want to meet in person. And so, because they want to meet in person, but still have maybe one or two members who are remote, we've got to find a place that has microphones for everybody, so that everybody's six feet apart, and, and a system that's integrated electronically, so folks can participate elsewhere. It's, it's pretty extraordinary. What we'll get into in that meeting is adoption of commission meetings policy, the same way this body has a board, board meetings policy that defines our rules of order, they will do the same, they will also begin the process of promulgating rules regarding open records. After that, it'll be an overview of what we take that initial report to be, as well as the structure of it, and give members plenty of time to discuss. With that, I am happy to take questions, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Nathan. I do have to compliment you and our team, you did an excellent job. I was incredibly impressed with the program that you laid out for them, the agenda, and the way that that process flowed in order for you to get them to the point where they could actually end up with a slate of officers, with the Chair and the Vice Chair. But the work was very comprehensive. You all would have been incredibly proud of Nathan and Angie and Sarah for the great work that they did to pull that together for the commission. The commission is fortunate to have our support administratively with our great team that you just heard from, of course, Nathan. So, I'm going to stop and see if there are any questions from any other board member or comments.
And let me make sure to give Catherine on Amy's team specifically, she's, she's doing yeoman's work, Elizabeth Callos, great assistants putting that together, Casey Griffin as well, there's, it's, it's a big, a big effort.
Thank you for saying that, because of you three being the primary ones who are out in front speaking, sometimes those support people are not mentioned when they should be, so thank you for that, Nathan.
Madam Chair, this is Mike Edwards.
Yes, Mr. Edwards.
I want to echo exactly everything that you said about staff, it is remarkable what they're being asked to do and how they're stepping up. I'd also like to commend the Governor and the Legislature for really putting together an all-star cast on that board. That's about as impressive a state board I've seen. Those people are going to produce with our help, with staff's help, some extraordinary work, I'm sorry.
You would have been incredibly impressed hearing them speak, as if they had been meeting with one another for years, and their engagement was at the highest level, which would you, which you would expect from the caliber of people that were chosen. So, you were right on, Mike. Thank you. Hearing no other comments, we are in a position to prepare for adjournment. I do want to say thanks again to all of our speakers, the work that you do in advance to prepare for today is impactful to us as a board as we get ready to vote tomorrow on many of the items that you presented to us today, so thank you, as always. So, the purposes of the committee as a whole have been fulfilled, therefore, I declare it, and the board adjourned. Thank you all very much, I look forward to seeing you tomorrow in the board meeting. Have a good evening. Thank you.